Susan, are we on?
All right.
And Public Works presented their case already. And we're gonna just bring it up to where we left off. And that'll be Guy up there presenting his case.
I really don't think I presented a case. I'm just giving the background and seeing where we're going from here.
Right. So... Just let me remind you of something, please.
Sure.
That, you know, this is on an appeal from the...
Okay.
Right? You made the appeal?
Yes, on behalf of Novi Plaza. That is correct.
Okay. So that's to the Planning Commission's decision, correct?
Decisions, yes.
All right. So that's where we're at.
Okay. So you preface all this meaning?
I just wanted to make it clear so everybody could understand that.
Okay. So there seems to be resistance to me showing county documents. Here, is that fine now? Can I show these documents?
Yep.
Okay.
Do whatever you like.
Okay. Do you want me to take the picture of my mother back?
No.
Okay. Okay. So I'll start there. What I was trying to do is give some background information, very briefly, okay, about my feelings and the freedom of choice about medical marijuana. My father had cancer. He went through all the conventional therapies. When those weren't working, he got a doctor. My mother found him a doctor in Berkeley, California, John Richardson. John Richardson treated people with intravenous vitamin C Laetril. Won't go into the whole history, but you can read an excellent book if you want to know all about Laetril. I think the guy's name that wrote it was G. Edward Griffin. He also wrote that book that's a lot more popular years later, The Monster from Jekyll Hyde. He's kind of a documentary-type guy.
Creature.
Creature, okay. You know the book. Okay, G. Edward Griffin. He wrote an excellent book in the '70s, World Without Cancer. Everybody should read it. Everybody should eat apricot pits. I'm not a doctor, so I'm not telling you to do that, but because I could be arrested and thrown in jail for practicing without medicine. Hey, it's not really funny. That's actually what happened to my dad's doctor. After he was raided by the feds a couple times, then my dad could no longer get that treatment there. We loaded him up in an ambulance, took him to the airport, flew him down to San Diego, and he took an ambulance from there to this little hospital down below Mexico. And he was treated with intravenous Laetril. Okay? Why I gave you that article there, it shows my mother campaigning, a newspaper article, her campaign and her little shirt on. Okay, my mother was very, always very politically active. So that's the background of where I came from. And actually, it was my mother's idea to open a medical marijuana collective. I was, she was in a assisted care home up in Vallesido. And I was talking to her one day, and one of the other people that had a room there, somebody was bringing them some edibles, and it seemed to be helping them, and said, "Why don't you look into it?" Anyway, to make a long story short, I looked into it. I went over to kind of the epicenter of medical marijuana, which is Oakland, California. I hired a couple of attorneys, kind of top-of-the-ends attorneys. I hired the gentleman to counsel me, Robert Raich. Robert Raich fought a case all the way for his wife, Angel Raich, who had brain cancer, fought one all the way to Supreme Court. He lost that case. It was when Ford was, Gonzalez, Attorney General Gonzalez. He lost that case, but he had a lot of knowledge in it. So looked into it very carefully. Okay, I started looking at the ordinances, Calaveras County, and 1791 or whatever it is, kind of buried down there in the bottom. So I finally found that. And the zoning to open a dispensary is pretty clear. It needs to be commercial, professional. Most of the commercial, professional is right around the hospital up here. So we went out and we, I formed a corporation called Calaveras Health Collective, Inc. I had several conversations with Downham, and he always referred to collective. But he told me it wasn't really up to him until it went before the planning, and then that's when he got involved in it. So when I went and started processing or attempting to process an administrative use permit on CP property, the planning department's opinion at that time, well, it's very much like that we should be doing a conditional use permit. So therefore, we need a copy of the lease, we need an indemnity agreement from Mark Twain Board, and we need some other things, because we think it's more like a conditional use permit. My own personal opinion, I think it's quite clear in the ordinances that there's an administrative permit process and a conditional use process, but whatever. So that was early 2010. So the hospital didn't really want to deny it. They wanted to seem open-minded. So they kind of pestered Downham to give him a letter. And he came back and pointed out and said, "Hey, I really don't care what the county says. Dispensaries aren't legal. Only collectives are legal." And downloaded a bunch of stuff off the Internet about all the problems they had in the inner cities with dispensaries. So that being the case, the hospital said, "No, we don't want you there." So that was towards the end of March. Downham's letter, I'd be happy to share with you. This is the letter. It was March 18, 2010. This was a letter back to the hospital. The meeting was thereafter. Now, what's the importance of this date? Is that on April 2nd through April 7th, I was up here getting departments to sign off. So I think it's a little disingenuous when folks at the department said, "We didn't know anything about it. We didn't know what a collective was." The name, okay, let's see if it's on this one or another. The name was clearly spelled out on the stuff given to the county, as collective, and I said, "Apply for an administrative use permit there at the hospital." This is not, I'm sure you have this. I, in a hurry, only found a copy that I had a while ago, so I just chopped it down. And the importance of this is showing that planning, okay, on this date, and in fact later, okay, because this is not the only part of my on this matter, I was working on attempting to apply for administrative use permit at this time to planning. So like I say, I think it's a little disingenuous when folks come forward and say, "We didn't know anything. We didn't understand it." Sure.
Mr. Meyer, I have a problem with this. It appears that there's, that's been photocopied and there's...
Yeah, it's what the deal is.
Condensed?
Well, there's two pages. Okay. The page that I had that I found readily, and I think I have the original copy. I had a bunch of notes on it.
Oh, okay.
Disagreeing or summing my thoughts on what the body of the letter said.
Yeah, but do you have those originals with you?
Yeah. No, I don't have them with me. Okay? The importance that I was trying to signify is not what was in the body of the letter itself, which was basically their opinion that it should be conditional use versus, you know, what administrative use and stuff like that, which really wasn't, really, at the end of the day, really wasn't the argument.
So that's not a photocopy of the originals?
It is a photocopy.
It's an edited copy of the originals.
Yes, this is just cut out because of the...
Okay.
But I didn't, once it got through the process...
Sorry, pardon, lose me.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm on the tape. So, yes, this, this here, I condensed. I took out of an original. I took the signature page off, and I reduced it. The reason I did that is the one that I came up with quickly to appear here today, I had put lots of little notes on it. But I do somewhere in my files have the original thing. Counties should have it in their files also. They probably don't have it right here with them today, because it's not... What the point that this is, hopefully, driving home is, I've heard these rumors and statements that, "Oh, we didn't know about this. Oh, we didn't know what a collective was." Both of the words are used in this. This was the organization we were applying under, Calaveras Health Collective, Inc. At the time, we were going down the path of a dispensary in CP. Hospital didn't want it there. Nobody wanted it there. But what came out of that is this letter from Sheriff Downham. That matched some later conversations. His belief, the chief law enforcement officer at the time, his belief was, it didn't matter about Calaveras County dispensary ordinance, dispensaries were illegal in 2010. He further states, though, that collectives are legal. So, okay, the hospital didn't want it there. I've got some vacant property that's zone C2. I go look up all the ordinances, zoning. There's no zoning ordinance against a collective in C2. So I come up here, maybe 10 days, maybe 10 days after the last correspondence or the last effort of anything, that everybody over here, okay, at the county, was aware of what I was doing over at the hospital, and should have been, at least the sheriff's department, was aware of this letter. So this supposedly disconnect, well, nobody really knew what Guy was doing. Nobody knew it was a medical marijuana. He didn't say it. It was this, that, or the other. And, you know, since, since I picked up the package and the planning department recommendation on Wednesday, I've been waking up at 2:00 to 3:00 every morning. I wake up just shaking my head like this, and I said, "What picture is trying to be presented? It's not factual. Let's get back to the facts." Okay? This wasn't a surprise to anybody. So we got this statement, and everything being saying, "Guy said this, Guy said that." Well, Guy filled out one thing that somebody has doctored, somebody at the county. And that is what this rumor, this untrue information is being based on. I don't know if it's somebody in this room. I don't know if it's somebody over there. Maybe Peter knows, okay? Peter, do you know who, which department is claiming that those were stuff I put on that thing? Do you know whose writing that is?
I'm not sure what he's referring to.
This copy here is the original copy that planning signed off. Do you confirm that?
Is this, if I'm being cross-examined here, or are you addressing the board? I'm not sure what the purpose of this discussion is.
I'm at a loss. I'm at a loss.
So normally, Guy, what we do is we, you get a chance to bring forth your argument against, with your appeal.
Oh, okay. I mean, I'm sorry I'm getting off track. But, you know, it's hard for me to...
And if you have questions, they'll write them down. And at the end of your presentation, then hopefully, they'll be able to answer your questions.
Okay. Rather than ask them as I go along?
Yeah, it gets confusing that way.
Okay, not a problem. Well, maybe I just try to read them off my notes, because taking the time to rewrite them's gonna take too much everybody's time. Okay. Not asking staff, but do I need to pick up the other ones? Maybe I should. It seemed like at the planning commission hearing, and I watched it on tape, it seemed like, and I didn't, I didn't get a copy of the full packet that the planning commissioners have, but it seems like somebody was pulling out one business license and seemed to be, and seemed to be unaware that four business licenses for consecutive years were issued. Now, the importance of that is that in the package that was given to you today is the language that some unfamiliar person agreed to the business license. It was presented to four people, building, planning, tax collector, and the assessor's office, I believe, is the other one that signs off. So I don't know which of those four was the unfamiliar person, but if we're trying to lead people to believe that the unfamiliar person did it four years in a row, it's, like I say, it's disingenuous. It's, I don't think that's the facts. So, and maybe that's not the right word. I think it's the right word. So hopefully, I pointed out that forgotten knowledge has been legal from day one. It is legal today. Now, as you're all aware, and I don't know what day that the board in 2013 decided to litigate with forgotten knowledge, but I assume you did. I assume in a closed session that there was a vote, okay? I don't know if you did, like the business license say, that you formally revoked or rescinded the business license, like it says on the license. I'm not aware if you did or you didn't, okay? I'm not aware, but I assume there was a vote to litigate. I'm not aware if the response from forgotten knowledge was communicated to you from the letter of noncompliance. I'm not aware of what went on behind closed doors. But I am aware of the fact that I got sued, my partner got sued, the gallant forgotten knowledge got sued, my dead mother got sued, our corporation got sued, okay? And I was spending money to defend myself. I had another application that was for some M4 zoning that was already in the process. People didn't want that, okay? I came up here, I tried to ask for a continuance. I was ill. I tried to point out the fact, I already had plans, already had stamped plans. The response from, was it Andy Andrew? What was his name? He was here for about six months. He gave the thing. No, we never seen that. You know, part of the process of getting a building permit is the county planning department, I think in 2005, when I presented those, I believe that part of that was planning would have to sign off. But whatever, that got shot down. So I met with my representative on several times, saying, "Hey, let's try to get something worked out. It's a waste of my tax dollars paying the county to sue me. It's a waste of my cash to spend my money defending myself. How can we work this out?" I was coming to appeal. Peter came out and said, "I think we got a way to work this all out. Drop your appeal today." I think that was around March of 14. "Let's go outside. I think we got it worked out." "Okay, great. What do you got worked out?" "Gina figured out the number. Give us $9,700, and we'll do this, we'll do that, and then we'll get this resolved." And I said, "Hey, what about Novi Plaza? Novi Plaza needs to benefit something. Novi Plaza's got this set of plans. They paid about $20,000 or $25,000. That's on for commercial. This piece is being called industrial. Can we get this in, and then everybody wins here?" "Yeah, we'll see if we can do that." Now, sometime in the process, and it was a long extended period of time before it ever got to the planning commission, but at a certain point, I got an email from Gina. Well, Caltrans doesn't like it. I think my email back to you was something like, "Caltrans doesn't like anything." But the bottom line was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gina, but I think the bottom line with the planning department was, "Hey, we can't give a..." What's the term when you don't object? Negative, not a negative deck, but a, is it a negative deck? I'll, I'll...
I understand what you're saying.
No, I'll come, I'll come back to the word. It'll remind me. That it didn't need any environmental work. That's the term I'm searching for. But now that Caltrans wrote this letter, we can't give that negative deck, because you need to go out to satisfy Caltrans to get a traffic study. I said, "I'm not gonna spend $20,000 or $30,000 on an engineer to draw some little arrows where trucks, on the assumption that property going from M4 to C2 is gonna be more traffic when I already put in a heck of an encroachment, spent a quarter million dollars widening Highway 26, and now I've got one half acre that I want to change from industrial to C2." Now, prior to that, I went to a meeting where the recycling place is going in, and they got gripes from Caltrans, because that's what Caltrans does with every project. They gripe about everything. They got their negative deck. I don't think they were requested to do a traffic study. Anyway, I said, "Whatever, take that off. Wasn't the deal for, you know, Novi Plaza loses on that one, but, you know, this has been dragging on long enough. Let's get it on." To the planning commission. I was surprised when I got the recommendation from the planning department to the planning commission. I was not only surprised because it was 180 degrees from what was agreed upon, but not but six weeks earlier than that, I read an article in The Enterprise, okay, about the whole medical marijuana issue. And there was quotes from county council's office saying, "Hey, these things are resolved. We've only got one issue going with one place." So I thought this was all a done deal. Today, I scratched my head and said, "Why was I so stupid to come up with another $9,700? Except I trusted. I trusted what was being told to me. I was trying to work to resolve a problem that I thought needed to get resolved." But let me repeat one more time, because the lies and the rumors have been going along a long time. Number one, forgotten knowledge as a collective, under the guidelines of the sheriff at that time, was not, is not illegal. We can debate that till the cows come in. You know, we cut a compromise, we cut an agreement, we can either honor it or not honor it. The decision is up to you. But I'm scratching my head and saying, "Why are county staff lying about me? What is this resentment?" And this thing about Caltrans, I start thinking about, you want to talk about bookstores? Yeah, I was trying to get a bank in Valley Springs at 6th California Street, 35 years ago about, okay? And Caltrans didn't like it. And I had to threaten to open a bookstore there to get the attention of the county and say, "Why, in order to bring a bank into town, do I have to widen half of the five-lane section for a 200-square-foot building?" You know, that was a fight. Somebody around here, I don't know if they resent that. I don't know if they resent the fact that Terry Bailey didn't win. I don't know if they resent the fact that the DA wasn't able to put me in prison for her allegations charges. You know, there seems to be a resentment going. And to commit fraud and alter documents to try to make me, I mean, that's horrendous. That is horrendous. So anyway, we can all move on with our lives. You have, you have an item before you today. I think it should end here today. Okay, I really do. I think it's to everybody's benefits. It's especially to the benefits of the taxpayers of Calaveras County, okay? So I'd appreciate your consideration that we all move forward, and we don't, we don't make this a bigger fight than it needs to be. Okay, thank you. So my questions? Is this appropriate time or no?
You still got the floor.
Oh, okay. So do we know who signed the document and question?
Just ask the questions, all of them at once. They'll write them down, and then when it's their turn to...
Do I, do I, I don't want to waste anybody's time. I got about four different pages of questions. Some of them may not be significant right now, so I don't want to be redundant, and I don't want to stand up here and take any more time. Can I reserve some of my time to come back? Is that permissible?
Yeah, you'll have more time.
Okay, that'd be the most expedient for all of us, I think. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
I'll ask for any presentations by members of the public.
I'm House of the Gaslight Taxpayer Association. The taxpayer association doesn't get involved in drug issues and things like that. We're mostly concerned about how efficiently and effectively the government is operating. Also, is there harm being done to property owners and property rights? Those are real issues for us, and it looks like that's going on here. I read the brief that, from the attorney for the applicant, and it seems like there was a misunderstanding as to what type of business he had. Apparently, a collective is not the same thing as a dispensary, and where a collective is apparently legal. Apparently, he had a business license for a collective. Sometime after that, words were added to the license that suggested it was bookstores or antiques, something like that. That didn't come from the applicant, according to his sworn deposition. He also has a copy of the application that he submitted, which didn't show these other words on there. So when it came, then things got confusing, apparently. It appeared that if his application was calling it antiques and books or something, and then he was actually running a medical marijuana collective, then it was apparent fraud there and deceit. He was deceiving the county because he was calling it books and such. Well, this is what they claim in this deposition. Okay, I have a hard time believing that county staff would deliberately do this to discredit the applicant. I have a hard time believing it. I think what probably happened was since after the word collective, there was a dash, it didn't say medical marijuana or anything else. They just added that in there, because they, whoever wrote it, thought that that's what it was. Maybe there was some conversation going on regarding books and antiques or something. I don't know. But one thing for sure is apparently he had a legal permit for what he's doing there. The issues of zoning change and this is highly technical, and the net effect of that is causing the... the applicant to spend an awful lot of money to try to satisfy government. And so if this is all true, then he needs to have his application approved as quickly as possible without any further expenditure of money, in our opinion. Thank you.
Bill McMast, Calaveras Project. Just a couple of observations from the comments that were made. I think it's insulting that dispersion should be cast on the planning department for the things that they've done. Having been through the process at the planning commission and so forth and so on, a lot of information was given. People worked very hard on it. But there seems to be this implied accusation that somehow the planning department changed something or didn't understand something or whatever the case may be. I would direct your attention to the second page of the documents that I gave you, and what you will find is a copy of the Articles of Incorporation, Forgotten Knowledge Collective, Inc. It was endorsed and filed April 21, 2010, the Secretary of State's office, State of California, and her seal is affixed at the bottom. If you would drop down, just to show you where the deception may lie, if you look at item 2B, and I have to read this into the record, and I'll try to get through it without cracking up, but that's why you have a copy of it. The specific purpose of this corporation is to assist those afflicted by drug dependencies. Now, I don't know how that dovetails with a marijuana dispensary.
Maybe you have a son that died in an overdose. Maybe then you grill up some stuff. Don't spit on my son's grave, Parker. Don't!
Mr. Chairman?
Are we in order?
We are now.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know what he said. Was he talking to me?
Yes.
Just continue.
Oh, okay. Well, in any case, if you... Taking the Articles of Incorporation, I think the deception's been on the part of the applicant or the appellate that goes back a long ways. On the first page of the packet that I gave you, I don't know if I've given this to you before, but it's a checklist of some of the things that the ordinance, 2830, calls out for the operation of a marijuana dispensary. I would be interested in knowing how many of those conditions have ever been met, if any of them, and at what point the planning director, who's in charge of enforcing this ordinance, has been able to verify any of those conditions having been met. So I would say that, you know, everything has gone, been upfront. Planning department's done their job. Planning commission did their job. There didn't seem to be too much confusion in their minds when they voted unanimously to deny both of the applications. So I think that if that's something that they studied and worked on, I think we can rely on their work, and I've never found them to be anything but honest and cooperative. So I would urge you to support your planning department and to support your planning commission and deny the portion of it that changes the zoning to CP and also deny the appeal for the administrative use permit. Thank you.
I want to make something clear. When a person stands up at this podium, that's their time. Nobody else's. Nobody else's. All right? That's what we have time for. If you want to get up and speak at the podium, you can do that. You don't interrupt anybody else. That's... Okay? That's why we have time limits for public comments and people coming up to speak. So everybody's going to have a different opinion once in a while. We have to respect each other's thoughts. We all think differently. So if you get up here and speak, nobody's going to interrupt you either. Okay? Thank you.
Your terms, Tony.
Hmm?
Is it five minutes?
Yes. So we can continue.
Here I just have some letters from the members of Forgotten Knowledge Collective. I thought it might be useful in letting you guys know how important Forgotten Knowledge Collective is to some members in the community. Is it okay if I give them to you?
Sure.
Okay.
It's just copies of each other's... You can leave them here, and we'll pass them on.
Oh, and this is a petition that people signed in support of Forgotten Knowledge and having the rezoning granted. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public input, comments?
Sir, you're giving your presentation. That's whatever you like.
Hello, my name is James Lynch, and I'd like to thank you first for giving me this opportunity to speak. And I just want to speak on the fact that Forgotten Knowledge Collective, which I am a member of, allows me to get my medication just like any other pharmacy in the area. They give me prompt courteous service. I see no difference. I am forced, due to several major illnesses and surgeries, to take over eleven hundred pills a month, and it is imperative that I keep these down. And it's very difficult to do so without the medication that they provide. And I'm not here to sling any mud on anyone or talk bad about anybody. I'm just here to say that I appreciate what they're doing, and that if you could see your work clear to make that continue for me, it would be of great benefit to my life and my future. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Arthur Ramirez. I live off of Valley... In Valley Springs, off Silver Rapids. I've used the Forgotten Knowledge for about a year. They're very nice there. They're very kind. They're very helpful. I wish you could find a solution to this other than denying, because then you're saying, "We don't want it that here. We're going to make you drive outside the county." You know, you're talking about businesses, bringing businesses into the area. This is a business. It provides a service to people in the area. You're asking all those people to go someplace else. So I'd really appreciate it if you consider that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public input, comments?
Members of the board. My name is Cynthia Bulmer, and I'm a retired probation officer. I have been... I was born in pain, and I have a lot of things going on that were inherited, like Barrett's esophagus and things like that. At one point, I weighed over 200 pounds taking all the medications that the doctors wanted me on. I finally told my doctor, "Please, no more. Can I go get medical marijuana?" And I've done a lot of research on this over the years. I would say Colorado's so far ahead of us that it's... I wish I could live there. In that year's time now, I have lost 65 pounds. I'm down to just a few pills, which the question was getting people off, being off of drugs. Those drugs that they give you are addicting. Norco, Xanax, all that stuff is drug addicting, and you can die from them. You can get liver cancer, you can get kidney cancer, end up on dialysis. Medical marijuana, my doctor said I could get edibles because of the Barrett's esophagus. So I get a little thing, and I slice it up, and at nighttime for bed, I just eat two pieces, and I sleep better than I've ever slept in my life, which the next day, because I slept real good for those six hours, I'm actually not in pain. And it like gives your body a chance to heal while you're sleeping good. If this thing is denied, I will have no choice other than to go back on all the pills that I don't want to be on. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. What? Okay. I'd like to take a five-minute break, please. Yeah. As soon as we're back off the break, then, okay, if you don't mind. Zoning issue. That's what it is. Zoning issue. And as, you know, you're allowed to get up and speak whatever you want. That's the beautiful thing about America, right? And it is... It's very emotional for a lot of us because we've all been touched in one way or another by many of the things that you're going to bring up. We all have that. But this is simply... This is simply an ordinance, and it's a zoning issue. That's what this appeal is about in this appeal hearing. So I'm not trying to discourage you from speaking about whatever you want to speak about. That's, you know, your right to do that, and that's why I came down on everybody so hard earlier, because I want everybody to have that right. I just want to remind everybody what it's really about here. It's not about chasing anything out of the county or anybody out. It's about a zoning issue. Okay? So please, next speaker.
My name is Julie McGrew. I am a homeowner from Copper, and while unfortunately I cannot address the zoning issues, I neither have the knowledge or training to do that, I would like to address two points. One, I would like to reiterate the economic impact that the ruling might have. I personally, I have had rheumatoid arthritis for almost half a century, and my... The trips I make have to be combined, as most people, I'm sure, with low incomes, make... Try to make as much of a trip out of the house as possible. When I come to Forgotten Knowledge, I do do my shopping locally. I spend my money in the county. I try to keep everything I do local. Unfortunately, if I am forced to leave the county for my medication, I will probably also need to do most of my shopping where I am doing that. I know this does not address the zoning, but I did want to let you guys know how much of an impact it could have with people having to take their medication business elsewhere. I do also appreciate that Forgotten Knowledge makes available a form of medical treatment that is non-hallucinogenic, which allows me to treat the severe pain that rheumatoid arthritis makes without having the side effects of having to go on very hard narcochemicals, which I am desperately trying to avoid having been on it for so long. So I appreciate your time, and thank you for letting me speak. I just want to let you know that trying to keep it local, if the ordinances can allow. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Don't be shy. It's a good time.
I'm afraid now.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm afraid. I'm pure race with genuine... Einstein was a coke addict. Then they discovered how bad it was. And all of it took him to straighten him out. Einstein was a coke addict. But Coca-Cola, take a look back there. We have some distinguished, outstanding public figures. Kennedys, they made their money on probation... Plus, they introduced water boarding, but that's a different story. Unfortunately, regardless if you like it or not, there's a good chance that you're going to have farming in a federal land. How many of those cops go up in a forest? How much control you have over that? Unfortunately, reality, I smoked pot before. I wouldn't have the nerve to drive pot now because I was afraid of it. Doctors give them the prescription. Go after the... If that doctor for 25 bucks give you a prescription, let's make it legal for them to have it. Go after those doctors who sell those prescriptions. There's a lot of people who could use this medication. Either you're going to have some kind of oversight and control. I would love to have one of the sheriff deputies come in here, what kind of problems they have, educate the problems. Nobody wants a bunch of high school kids smoking a joint next door. It's happening now anyway. You're not going to do anything about it. The law enforcement's not going to throw those kids in jail. Your DA is not going to throw them in jail. A DOD's without medical prescription, they're going to smoke. I don't envy your job because I perfectly understand some folks totally against it. The only thing you can hope for, because the feds not going to help you. Tribal land, they're not going to enforce anything. Totally out of control, and you know it. You're going to earn your keep, folks. Come up with a reasonable, ethical, realistic control of the situation. You're not going to please everybody. You're not going to make everybody happy. So I definitely not going to tell you what to do. It's your own conscience and reality, what's going on, and how the best way to do the best for most people. Nobody wants to live in a county that's a bunch of addicts going around, but a lot of the people do take it as medical purposes. They got the doctor's approval. Either going to do it here, they got to do it behind a building. Take a look at the lessons of what, Arizona? I think it's Arizona that's legal. Arizona, Colorado, which one of those states, one of them have it all legal and so on. They want to control it for the income. You're stuck between the state, the feds, and your local constituents. What's realistic sometimes is not very pleasant, but it is here, and the best you can do is try to make it so it's the most civilized and compassionate situation you're putting And unfortunately, you have to deal with it, just like you have to deal with alcoholics, cocaine addicts. Is the law enforcement going to help you? You're just creating more problems. I don't envy your job. Remember, you got my sympathy. It's crap, but that's what you want in this job. What it's going to cost one way or one... And if you go, "Hey, you're going to go to litigation," who's going to end up paying for the litigation? Your constituents. They're going to pay for it. So you got my sympathy, folks. You try to please a whole bunch of people. I wish I had the answer. I usually have all the answers, but this time, good luck, folks.
Any other public comments? All right, so Guy?
I'll give my time, Mr. Bulmer.
Okay.
I just want to talk about zoning a little bit. This property started off split-zoned, C2, M2. They want to take it C2 CP. What's the big deal? I thought I was here this morning, and the EDC said that the chances of getting businesses to come into this county from out of the county aren't worth chasing. What we have to do is we have to work with the businesses we already have in this county and build them up and help them grow. Forgotten Knowledge is one of those businesses. They employ people. They've been there for five years now, and as Mr. Maurer pointed out, you know, it's not a bad place for it. And he would know. He's the head of planning. Last year, when this application was developed as a resolution to a situation, who was the input? We had input from the planning director, the person who you would hope was really in the know about what's right. We had the input of a supervisor, whose district it was, who must have had a feel that this was right at the time. And we're not even a year down... And we're not even a year down the road. And what happened? Well, maybe anything that got sent to the planning commission having to do with marijuana would always be voted down. I don't know that much about it. At least that's kind of what it seemed like when I was at the commission hearing. But this change in zoning is relatively insignificant. I mean, you had split zoning up in Arnold if you consider CPPD to be a split zone, which was approved by this board, I think, within the last year, six months.
By this board.
A previous board.
Correct.
Okay. In any event, the board, the county approved that split zoning. And hopefully, there's some value to precedence. But it's just that, I remember from years ago, in the general plan, there are these, this concept of overriding considerations. And back in the eighties, the overriding consideration that was always drummed up was jobs. We need more jobs up here. We need businesses. And Forgotten Knowledge is a business. It's been here for five years. It employs people and the change in zoning is really not significant. And, and I would certainly hope and defer to the people that put this potential resolution together, that it is in the best interest of the county to get rid of whatever the problem is. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A number of issues have been raised. And again, it sort of boils down to the planning commission's action was to deny the zoning because of their, their finding that they felt that it was inappropriate for the split and spot zoning of this, this site. We've had a lot of discussion about the history of it. It's really not germane to the question of whether or not the zoning should be approved. If you have questions about any of those issues relating to the history of the permit, I'm happy to answer those, but I don't really think it's necessary to go into it at this point in time, since the question before you is whether or not to approve the zone change, and then if so, whether to approve a administrative use permit. It is important that the definition of a dispensary, as we've defined it in our code, is addressed. It's 1791-020. I won't read the whole definition, but a medical cannabis dispensary means any facility or location where medical cannabis is made available to and are distributed by one or two or more of the following, and it goes into a long list of different types of individuals and caregivers that can distribute marijuana. Clearly, Forgotten Knowledge, whether you call it a collective or dispensary, follow under our definition of a dispensary in the code. Whether or not, the sheriff has a different definition of collective for criminal purposes is not relevant to the zoning code. We define it as any distribution of medical cannabis.
Peter, can I just ask quickly, when, when did we adopt that definition?
We did meet with the applicant and convinced him to withdraw his formal appeal a year and a half ago. At the time, it seemed like a reasonable solution, but as staff, we can't make an agreement that binds the board to certain kind of action. So this is a legislative act that is within your purview, not within mine, to make that agreement. It's maybe unfortunate that we felt necessary to change our recommendation after initially suggesting to them that would be an appropriate course of action. The, the issue again is whether or not the board's intent in adopting the ordinance in 2005 was to limit the locations of dispensaries throughout the county by limiting them to the CP zone. And if just rezoning parcels to CP to accommodate a dispensary would frustrate that intent. The planning commission found that it was inappropriate to locate it here, and that's what's being appealed at this point in time. If however you find that there are unique circumstances associated with this site that makes it appropriate for the split zoning and the spot zoning of commercial office in this location, I would want to correct one thing on that point. We do not have split zoning today. The land use designation, the site has two different land use designations, so maybe it's split planning, but it all, it is all zone C2 today. So there's no split zoning at this point in time. The purpose of the general plan amendment, which we are still recommending approval of, is to correct that discrepancy. But if you decide that it is appropriate to approve the zone change, then we would recommend that you declare that intent, send it back to staff to come up with appropriate findings and conditions on administrative use permit, and we bring it back to you at a subsequent, subsequent hearing for final action. So I don't have anything else to say unless you have any questions.
Mr. Maurer?
Yes.
This indicates, actually it kind of mirrors the situation we had with the Little Trees. Is that, is that a collective or a dispensary up in Arnold?
Well, it's a dispensary.
It is a dispensary.
As far as our zoning ordinance is concerned, it is defined as a dispensary.
And in that situation, there was a zoning change?
There was a zoning change for the entire parcel.
For the entire office building parcel?
The whole lot, yes.
How did that affect the other businesses? Should new businesses come in there? Do they have to abide by the CP zoning regulations?
Yes, they would.
So actually took away the C2 capabilities? And anybody that leaves that building and a new business comes in, they have to be CPs or request a spot zoning?
They would need to conform to the CP restrictions, which are essentially professional offices. The commercial, the retail uses and other types of.
Do you know what kind of businesses are in that complex right now?
I do not know myself at this point.
I understand there's a, there's an electric company in there, there's a fireplace, a spa place. There's a variety of different commercial style businesses. But they're still under the CP zoning requirement.
They would be considered legal non-conforming uses. So that if they're, if they're a retail business, they were established while the property was zone C2. They can continue to operate until such time as they choose to leave that location. And then any replacement business, new business would need to meet the CP requirements.
That would kind of handcuff our capabilities to bring in new business of a variety types into the county, wouldn't it?
It could, yes. It certainly could constrain them.
What, what's the definition of collective?
I don't, we don't have one in our code.
There isn't?
Not in the zoning ordinance. There are differences as far as criminal law is concerned. And the initiative that was passed by the state of California voters several years ago, Prop 218, I believe, was a defense against criminal prosecution, not a legalization of medical marijuana. So it provides a proactive defense against criminal prosecution for using and distributing marijuana for medical purposes. There are some unique differences, or so I've been told, I do not know exactly what is on, sort of treading out on sort of the edge of my knowledge here. But there are some differences from a criminal law perspective between a collective and a dispensary, I understand. But as far as zoning is concerned, any distribution is considered a dispensary for our purposes.
Does a business license, and I couldn't see what he was holding the examples up, does it have on it the zoning of the property that it's issued on?
We have indicated where the planning department signs off that the zoning is C2.
What would the owner lose, without me trying to memorize it all, if it went from its current zoning to CP?
Basically, any type of retail use.
Yeah, restaurant.
And restaurant, a lot of the service uses.
But he's already got those there, so if it was changed to CP, he, those would not be able to exist any longer, or?
They would be allowed to continue operation until, for whatever reason, that business decided to move or close.
And we don't spot zone or split zone anywhere else in the county?
Oh, we have lots of places that have split zoning. A lot of places where you have a larger lot that maybe has highway frontage, the front part of the lot, maybe you zone commercial, the back part residential. There are other areas, some of the historic communities where there are split zoning. It's been the practice of the county, my understanding is that we're trying to reduce that. But it's, if there's nothing illegal about it, it's just not something that we've practiced here in the past, or promoted in the past, maybe a better term.
But a spot zone would be something in a parcel like this, where you take one little spot and change that.
Typical spot zone is where you have a use that's surrounded by some other use, maybe you put it in industrial use, right in the middle of residential. That'd be the classic spot zoning, you know, where you have incompatible uses surrounded by something else and you just plop that in there. That would be sort of the classic example of spot zoning. Split zoning is where you have a portion of the property zone one and the rest of it's on something else.
So I can't really tell on the, I don't know if I, it's called a general plan exhibit that's part of this, is the, the little strip shopping center, however you want to refer to it, that this is in, is that the entire part of the lot? Or does, are there parcels that aren't built on yet?
There, the, the lot is fully developed. The building runs across the, essentially the back of the parcel, and it, it extends into that area that's designated industrial as well. So a portion of the building as well, a portion of the parking lot is the line that separates the industrial from the, the commercial land use designation. Also would be proposed for the split. I'm not sure, I don't think it's the exact same line, but there's a, a line that says from this point on, it would be professional office, the rest of it would be C2.
So a lot of this, you know, the, with the zoning, you get kind of the idea behind the zoning is, is to determine, you know, the original intent of zoning in the first place and so you don't have nuisance problems, you know, whether you have industry, you know, polluting factories right next to residents, you know, that, that's, you know, could be very damaging to you, you know, health and safety. And so with this, that's kind of how I, I take a look at it. And, you know, part of the question that rises in my head is, you know, have there been a lot of complaints with this collective or this dispensary over the last five years? And do you have any knowledge of that or any way to get information on that?
I'm not aware of many complaints. There may have been, I mean, there's something obviously that generated the enforcement action. I believe we've had one recent complaint, but not, not a lot of complaints, no.
And, and then I look at, and it's a difficult, we're in a difficult time right now because we're in a, a transition time where marijuana will be becoming legal. And so most likely, it's headed in that direction. And so soon marijuana is going to be in a different category of, and that's what's generating this whole issue. It is a zoning issue, but the underlying cause of the zoning issue is marijuana issue and other personality issues possibly. But, but I mean, if you look at like comparing this use to other commercial uses throughout Valley Springs, you know, it seems like it's pretty compatible in this specific location with everything else around it. I mean, there is no elementary school right there. I mean, you know, there's, there's, it looks like just your typical shopping center, and this is a, you know, a place where they sell marijuana. And, and it seems like a perfectly reasonable spot to have this type of, of commercial activity. And if it was like out in, you know, the top of a ridge line somewhere, where you have lots of traffic, where you wouldn't usually have that traffic, you had lots of lights, you had lots of other types of activity, that would be incompatible use with the surrounding area, then I would have a lot bigger issue with it. But this is a, this is Valley Springs, this is a strip center. I mean, this is what they do. People drive in, they shop, they go, they come, they go, they come. You have, you're selling alcohol just down the road. I mean, alcohol is worse than marijuana, you know, it's, it's a much worse drug than marijuana, you know, and yet we're selling it, you know, all over the place. And so I think that, you know, there's, to me, I, I don't really have an issue with this zone change. I think it maybe, there's underlying problems that aren't really within the purvey of this board to, that, it's why it's here in the first place. But I, I really have, you know, I just think it's a compatible use. And it's specific to this location, too. It's not that we're saying all commercial zoning should be, you know, have dispensaries in it. But, you know, on a case-by-case basis, you look at this place, this is about as good a place you can find for a dispensary. So that's, that's my take.
Sometimes clapping's okay.
No booing.
Yeah, no booing. So Peter, can I, can you tell me the difference between this and, what is different from the Calvares Medical Collective and Forgotten Knowledge?
The main difference is that application, which has been appealed before you in a few weeks, will be, is proposed to rezone a portion of the building only, as opposed to a portion of the land. There also is a question about the proximity to a youth-oriented facility.
Yes. So I got a question now that, so I'm, I look at this not as a, to me, it's a business. And to me, it's a, it's about zoning, right? The marijuana issue, I'm trying to leave it aside because really, that kind of makes, makes it hard for me to decide what is legal and what isn't legal. And so, so if Forgotten Knowledge is in a C2 zone previous to CP zone, would it be considered a non-conforming use until it's gone?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So you said that the businesses up in Little Trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, in that area there? Those businesses can stay there because you, they, they switched it to CP, right? The whole complex?
They opted to, to rezone the entire parcel to CP, yes.
So they, they opted to rezone it to CP. The businesses that are in there now are, many of them, if they left and want to come back, they couldn't come back because it's CP.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
But they could stay there in a non-conforming use as long as they're there. Once they leave, then you can't bring another business in like that.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So is this any different?
Well, in this case, they're proposing to just zone the end of the building and that part of the land on which it's located, including part of the parking lot. There are, I believe, two businesses in that location. One is the dispensary and the other would be a use, I believe it's, it's an insurance company which would fit the CP zone use.
So the CP zone still is, that, that insurance company would stay there even if, because it's going to, if, if they, if it was all C2, right? If it was all C2 and stayed just like it is, that insurance company could stay there?
Insurance company could stay there whether it's CP or C2. And I think maybe what you're getting at is what, what would happen if we rezone the entire parcel CP?
No.
No, okay. So the two businesses that are in, the two, two portions of the building that are in the proposed CP zone would be restricted to CP uses. The other business is already a CP use, the insurance company.
So the insurance company is also C2.
It's also permitted.
So the, if, if the whole complex was C2, the only one that would be a non-conformance would be the collective or Forgotten Knowledge.
Well, it only would be legal non-conforming if it were established legally, you know, in conformance with the zoning and then the zoning changed. in conformance with the zoning and then the zoning changed to make it non-conforming. This is sort of the difference between, you know, if we change the zoning to make it non-conforming, then it's legal non-conforming use. If the business went in without being consistent, it's not non-conforming. I mean, it's not conformant, but it's considered an illegal use. It would not be able to continue operating without correcting the problem because the use came about after the zoning was in place as opposed to the zoning being placed on the property after the use was established.
Mr. Maurer, I think to correct something that might have been stated here. The zoning request on the parcel of the business in Arnold was made by the building owner. I understand he requested that zoning, is that true?
Yes.
So the businesses themselves that were existing really had no say or any input in that zoning request?
I don't know what kind of coordination he did with his tenants.
Was it required by those businesses to be contacted for their input?
No, no, it's the property owner's responsibility, property owner's right to make application.
So if we had a successful business in a, in a complex or a building or something that's existing now and this situation became a prevalent where we have a CP designation to that building, would that hurt the value of that business when it comes time to resell now and in the future?
Well, the business, no, because the business could continue to operate whether it's sold.
Well, let's say I want to sell my insurance agency. I don't have one, but I want to sell it and then all of a sudden we find out that, oh no, you can't put another insurance agency in this building, the building complex. It's not zoned correctly, it's zoned CP instead of C2.
Well, if the insurance.
Can that be a factor in that type of commerce?
That's not quite accurate. If the insurance agency were to be sold, the new owner of that business could continue to operate that business in that same location.
Even with a CP designation?
The insurance business is allowed in CP. Let's say it was, it was a restaurant.
Okay, there we go, let's change the business.
Restaurant was allowed in, was operating and the zoning was changed to CP. A restaurant could continue to operate at that location as long as the restaurant was in operation. So you could sell it, person after that could sell it. Once it closed down and moved away, and I believe there is a one-year timeframe in which the non-conforming use has to, if it's been discontinued for a year, then that use goes away. There's no right to bring it back. So then it would have to be an insurance office or medical office or something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you tell me what year the CP zone was adopted for, for the, for the, can you tell me what year the board decided that CP was going to be the zoning for dispensaries?
2005.
2005?
Yes.
How hard is it to, or is it even possible to change a lot and split the lot and take it through a common law?
If you're part of parcel map, the difficulty with splitting a parcel that already has a building on it is there are building code requirements for zero lot line buildings that have to have airspace. It would take fairly significant cost, I don't know how much, to reseparate or retrofit that, that building to meet zero lot line, essential condominium type of standards or a townhouse, commercial townhouse type of standards. There's four firewall, parapet walls, all kinds of things that need to be put in there to create a fire safe.
Practically impossible.
It can't be done. It'd be expensive.
Very difficult. Any other questions?
I do have one issue I need to clear it up. I'm a little confused about the application for the original business and the statement made on that application versus the submission of an application minus that statement. What is that statement and can you give me some time dates and history on what could have happened? Was that a notation made by a member of planning or someone else?
I don't know who made the, who wrote that note on the, the task collector, Treasury Task Collector's business license application form. The one that we have, that we got from the Treasury Task Collector does not have that statement on it. Now, my understanding for the, from discussion with the planner that signed off for our department was that she was unaware that it was a medical marijuana dispensary, that there was some conversation going on, whether it was directly or not, about collections, books and antiques and the like. She made the assumption that that's what it was when she approved it. She told me had she known it was a medical marijuana dispensary, she would not have signed off on the business license. She couldn't, it wasn't permitted in the zone. She was not aware, it was not offered to her and she did not ask whether or not medical marijuana collected with dispensary.
No, I've got personal experience with the county of Calaveras obtaining business licenses. And I can tell you that they ask you what kind of business you're going to have there. So I'm pretty confused about this, this happening and why it happened and why it's, there's a wonder about it. Well, that seems to clear up some information. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah.
Cliff, I have a comment. So a couple of comments I'd like to make. So I see, you know, this issue before me is to look at the zoning and make sure it's appropriate zoning for what the use is going to be. You know, I, I have, I support the use of medical marijuana. I, coming onto this board, we heard a lot of information about the county and where we were and in this issue of medical marijuana and dispensaries and grows and indoor grows and outdoor grows. And, you know, we know at the state level, there's a big movement to, you know, move medical marijuana, recreational use marijuana forward, et cetera, et cetera. But looking at what we have today, you know, I support the 2005 ordinance. There was a reason for that at the time and I continue to support that as we know today with the information we have. I'd like to see, you know, this worked out to where a dispensary would be legal to operate in this particular area. But I'm not the building owner, so that's something that they have to, to work out. But I do feel the 2005 ordinance that was approved and that we have supported throughout the process until something else triggers a change for us to take a look at that ordinance. For me, that's where I'm coming from in, in supporting that 2005 ordinance and seeing that, you know, things are where they belong in the proper zoning and that sort of thing. So until we change that, that's kind of where I'm at today with this particular issue.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment. I, I also support medicine for illnesses. A walking example of that, after spending 42 days in a hospital, I'm not here to argue medicinal purposes, pro or con for medicinal marijuana. I know I had some great drugs that brought me back in this chair today. Leaving that aside, I am a proponent of fairness and making things work in our county. And we haven't been able to do that in the last past few years. And it's been my goal to make that happen as a supervisor. I believe our ordinances do need to be relooked at and changed those that are detrimental and not, not working for our people, for our government, mainly our people. But I'm also a believer in establishing rules that everybody should follow equally and everybody should abide by those same rules instead of a select few. I hope you understand my position, but at this time I would not support this zoning change as presented. Thank you.
I have a career of, you know, using medications to treat people and I honestly do think that this industry that is being created in California and in Calaveras does have a place, but I also believe that it needs to be regulated. I don't like to chase business out of this area at all and I'm open to a lot of things, but we still have to follow a set of rules. And I understand why the planning commission voted the way they did. They have a code that they had to follow and right now we have the same code. This is not, do I agree with the use and the treatment and I don't want it to be thought that way. It's how am I interpreting the code? And right now I don't have an avenue unless the property owner wants to go to CP. And trust me, you know, the dead silent you're hearing up here, I can hear everybody's minds clicking on how to make this work and there just isn't a way at this time. I can't make this work for them, so I can't vote to overturn their decision.
Read a rebuttal. Yes, so the public has a chance to come back up and speak in rebuttal? The public?
Gentlemen, I appreciate your voice and your opinion, being straightforward and honest, okay? I think though, what we're, what we're overlooking is the fact that that was what this compromise was about, okay? We have different opinions. I don't want to further expound on the documents that exist. It's not my goal to beat up staff. It's not my goal to make the county's job any more difficult. A lot of people have recognized the, the need to upgrade the ordinance. I was here at the last planning commission, you weren't here, Cliff wasn't here, and this issue came up and I said, hey, I think you need to look at two separate ordinances. You need to look at the regulation of where marijuana is, is transferred, okay? I think sometimes we get off on, on tangents. And some of the culture folks don't like hearing me say this. But the fact of the matter, right now, the cultivation, transportation and sailor transfer of marijuana is illegal under state and federal law. Now, that being said, the citizens of California in, I believe, 1996 passed Proposition 215. And in that proposition, okay, as somebody said, it was that medical marijuana patients could not be prosecuted. They could still be arrested, could not be prosecuted. The state of California rectified that when they implemented Assembly Bill 420. And they said basically if you go out, take your doctor's recommendation and you go to your local county health department and you fill out some paperwork and you fill up, fill out, you can get a state card, okay? If you get that state card, then you're barred not only from prosecution, but also from arrest. Now, we've heard today, folks, that nothing about recreational use, they have real illnesses. You know, I could sit up here all afternoon and I could tell you story after story about people that came in there in the first year and a half, okay? There's some sad emotional stories. I'm not going to waste people's time. I think that issue has been resolved. Time and time again, folks come up here and they want to talk about marijuana as if it's this whole single recreational issue. The citizens of, the citizens of California are going to make that decision. This is just about medical marijuana. The fact of the matter is, yes, I have a different opinion of what folks that need to support the ordinance. Now, another thing that I wasn't even going to bring up today, but I will share with you and you can verify this with the staff, in October of 2010, the board at that time realizes after the opening of Forgotten Knowledge that maybe they needed to clean up the ordinance to make it a little clearer. And that was October of 2010. If you get that draft ordinance, it's lying through the line dispensary and the words collective. So whoever was working on that ordinance at that time, okay, realizes that those were two different types of entity. Now, that being said, we could probably debate, I could take out a copy of Webster and, and you'd say, oh, that was a cute name you came up with guy, Forgotten Knowledge Collective, but it's right in, in Webster, Daniel Webster actually, one of his followers came up with that, that line. So the issue here is, your planning department has indicated that it's a good location. We have a different opinion where the, where the line is. I think I'm right, they think they're right, they got the, they got the documentation, okay? And if we look at the history of Forgotten Knowledge, it's been there five years. I'm not aware of one call to law enforcement. I'm not aware of any incident or any complaints other than, you know, folks coming up here that have a general disregard and they don't like marijuana in any way, shape or form, okay? So I would, I would really like this to end here today, okay? I would appreciate you reconsidering your guy's position, okay? And say, hey, it's been here five years. The planning department has indicated that it's not a bad location. It doesn't have all these other challenges and problems. We don't currently have an ordinance that limits the number of locations. If you want an ordinance to say that, then you need to update. They tried or started down that path in October 2010. I wasn't involved in any of that, I don't know what happened. Somebody probably knows. But I think what happens a lot of time on the marijuana issue is you have a large portion of Calaveras County that is dependent on the income from growing marijuana. They're very vocal and I think sometimes they come up, they're vocal and things get passed on that should be dealt with right at that time. I think we should deal with and put to bed Forgotten Knowledge. Let it move forward because the endlessness of this doesn't benefit anybody. It's frustrating, it's, you know, hard to stand here and listen to people that never have been there that last time at the planning commission were saying what type of construction it was and how the walls could move, that have never even been there. And I just think enough is enough, okay? We all need to move on and you have an opportunity right here to do it. And I just think it's the proper one and appreciate, would appreciate it. We could put this to bed today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer.
Well, as we come to the end of this, hopefully, I think the comments made by the supervisors are very well taken. It's unfortunate that, that we all find ourselves in this position. You have ordinances on the books that you really are compelled to support and make sure that they're enacted. If you don't like them, if they're not working, if the world has changed, then the ordinance needs to change. And that's what you as a board need to do. It's let's modernize the ordinance, let's bring it forward, tear it apart, see what's wrong with it, fix it and do something about it. But then that will become the law.
But then, that will become the law. That will become the guide for boards in the future. As long as that ordinance is in effect, the board will support it. On the other hand, we have, and it's not really related, but it's illustrative, that we have totally unregulated growing of marijuana in the county, industrial quantities. And why is that happening? Because we don't have an ordinance, you know? So is no ordinance better than a bad ordinance? I don't know. It certainly creates for some interesting board meetings and the Planning Commission meetings. You know, the debate is all over the map. So I think rather than sweep our ordinances, our current ordinances, under the rug and ignore them, we need to support them, and then, in an expedited manner, let's take a look at the existing ordinance, see if something needs to be changed, tweaked, or totally rewritten, and let's see about getting a grow ordinance in place in Calaveras County to solve the problems that thousands of citizens of this county are having to deal with now. So that's the answer. It's not hiding or kicking the can down the road. You need to do your job now, and right behind that, there's another job waiting for you, and that's to look at these ordinances and see if revision or rewriting is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. We're still, yeah, we're still under public comments.
You know, in 2010, when that business license was approved, certain folks are now saying, well, we didn't know what it was. But after that collective opened in June of 2010, the newspapers let everybody know what was happening with Forgotten Knowledge. So what happened in 2011, when Forgotten Knowledge came to get their business license, after the whole world has seen the publicity that they were transferring marijuana there? What happened in 2012, when Forgotten Knowledge came and got their business license again, and everybody in the world, and everybody in planning, knows it's C2 and not CP, and we've got an ordinance from 2005 that's apparently now being violated, and everybody knows, but we keep taking the money and reissuing the business license? What happens in 2013, by then? We're to the point of litigation throughout the county against collectives. What happened when Forgotten Knowledge came up to the county and gave their check to the county in C2 zone? They took the money, and they knew the zoning was wrong. For four years, we submit for at least three, if not four, years, there's no excuse for the county continuing to give the business licenses to Forgotten Knowledge and allowing them to continue their investment in that business. I mean, it's one thing if you tell them at day one, you're not properly zoned, go away. It's another thing to let people start up a business and work it for four to five years, believing that, at least for three or four of them, that things are okay, and then, all of a sudden, pull the rug out from under the business. And what's the reason? Well, you weren't legally zoned back then, but we took your money. We took your business license funds. We also took $10,000 in permit fee or in application fees for rezoning. You got a business that's fighting to stay in business, and it didn't sound like it was doing too well a little while ago, but I would just ask you to think about that. You know, whoever was, excuse me, in charge of the ship at that time, kept taking the money, even though the zoning was C2. So, and I agree with Mr. Wright, I mean, come on. C2 to CP, you've got two businesses there that are both CP compatible, so the effect of the zoning is to make both businesses in that area consistent with the ordinance, the 2005 ordinance. And everybody goes home. But in the course of not doing that, what did this county do to these people who put their money and time into this business for all these years by not enforcing the ordinance? I mean, there's got to be something to be said for the failure of the county to do anything until after these people are deeply committed in a business that a lot of its members have come to support. So if you're looking for a reason, an overriding consideration, it's the fact that this business, unlike no other, has been getting business licenses for four years before somebody said, hey, we're now going to say you're in violation of the zoning ordinance. And of course, we can get around that by allowing the proposed split zoning that was paid for by the application fee. So I think that's another issue to be taken into consideration here. It just isn't the black and white of the 2005 ordinance. It's, well, how come the county kept taking their money all those years if it was illegal? Thank you.
I also got with Taxpayer Association. It's becoming apparent to me that this business should, well, two things. The comments made in opposition to marijuana, some of the comments I agree with, and we need not only to look at the ordinances that relate to marijuana, we need to look at all the ordinances in this county, which have effect on property rights, every one of them. And we actually are going through a general plan update process where we should be doing that. We should come out of that process with property rights, not only for this applicant, but any ones in the future, solid and protected, and government doing its job of protecting the rights of the people. In this case, it seems simply a matter of grandfathering a use that's been previously approved, money was taken by the county. It makes no difference what kind of business it is, because that's not an issue. What's at issue is process. Well, the process needs to be proper. What's proper in this case? The business, there's no complaints about the business? Business had been in operation, been previously approved? It should continue, grandfathered in, and at some future date? The grandfathering, as I understand it, would mean that if they left, then it would be a different situation for a new applicant. But in between the time that they would leave and now, if they grandfathered in, we could, perhaps, put together a better set of ordinances that'd be more protective to the people's rights. And if we could do that, that'd be a great thing. That's something you'd really be proud of. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other public comments?
How you doing? James Lynch again, from Valley Springs. I hear a lot of you saying that, you know, you are in favor of this medicine, and I'm glad to see that, you know, times are changing, because there are a lot of people that really rely on this. Among many other medications that I must take, this is one that is imperative to my health. And I also hear a lot of you saying that, you know, there's issues that need to be changed. Well, I feel in my heart that the idea of the people that put forth this country was to get things right for the people and not to extend things and continue to, you know, I just don't understand why we can't see it clear to make it work for all of us. Thank you.
As a goodbye, you guys got stuck with the big mess, okay? Wasn't your doing, or this planning director's doing, somebody unloaded you and you're stuck in it. I don't know how you're going to apply law retroactively. Good luck, and think about another thing. If it really comes down to push, come to shove, how's 12 people going to think about it? I got the impression your staff took the money, issued licenses. You didn't do it. Your staff did it, but you're going to be held accountable. Somebody screwed up years ago. It wasn't you. You inherited it. So think about their side. I can understand both sides. I have no problem with it. But it wasn't what regulation you passed. It was some greedy, shortsighted staff that got you in this pickle. Think about who's yanking, who's chain over here, folks? You need some cleaning up to do. Okay, it's not us here. The people who got you in this pickle, you better think about. Thank you.
Any other comments, sir? I guess I'll make mine. I have one more question. Close of the appeal hearing. Right. But I still have a question.
If you have questions, don't close.
No, the next one is the board discussion questions.
All right, so I'm, at this point, since we have, I have like A through H right here that I have to do, okay? So, this is a close of the appeal hearing, so we're going to close the appeal hearing now, and then we're going to go for board discussion questions and actions. That's next. I still have a question on, I'm interested in, on the Calaveras Medical Collective still, and how, because I know that's a whole separate situation than what Mr. Myers has over there. But I know the spot zoning is an issue, but I also know that, I mean, have we been, how have they stayed in business?
Well, we've been involved in litigation with both dispensaries, and it's a long, tedious process, and prior boards have directed us not to shut them down until the court gets way through the court process.
Mr. Meyer, I didn't understand you. Could you speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just on. The, my understanding is that prior board directed code enforcement office and county council to work through the court system to process, to prosecute those two cases, and it's been winding its way slowly through the court process, and the directive was not to do anything to shut them down until the courts directed so.
Not to shut them down till when?
Till the courts directed, until the court made a final determination.
Status of those cases, do we know?
Well, it's different from this.
Oh, it's different?
Yeah. So I want to get back to us and the matter at hand. So the recommendations, the Planning Commission recommends the board supervisors sign a resolution approving the general plan amendment of Mr. Guy Myers' property of 2014, 030, based on, upon the findings included therein. And that, so that is the adjustment of what?
That's the land use designation change to fix the discrepancy between the industrial and the commercial boundary. So it changed it from industrial to commercial.
Just for that portion of it?
Just that portion. And so it corrects the, this map on page 113 of your packet, someone referred to that earlier, shows where the current, the crosshatched area is the current industrial. That line would move to where the red line is. All, the whole site then would be, or general plan designated, commercial. So we're just fixing that problem. It's really sort of unrelated. There's a longer history involved with Mr. Myers, sort of referred to that, wanting to do some additional changes, and then when Calaveras got involved, realized he needed to do traffic analysis because of the potential change in traffic, he dropped that portion out.
Yeah, but that was for zoning it differently.
That was for, right.
Or giving it a different land use.
Right. Changing the land use designation. But this would correct this discrepancy between the existing zoning and land use. No problem with that.
Okay.
Planning Commission recommended approval.
I know that there's no problem with it, but I mean, he didn't have a problem with it before, right?
Right.
So really, it's, I mean, it's being done so that we can, it helps the county with their general plan to be consistent.
It helps the county. It also would help Mr. Myers at some future date, if he were to apply for some other application that required discretionary approval, we would need to make finding of consistency with the general plan. For the commercial use not permitted in industrial zone, you'd have the same problem. He doesn't now, may or may not ever come up in the future.
Right. So, but it is, it is still, it happened somehow where that, that building got built on, across another lot line.
It's not a lot line. It's just a boundary between the land use designation.
Okay, so it got built across the land use designation, which split them, and so that was like approved by the county to have that building done, all right?
Right.
So everybody makes mistakes, I see that. All right? And then it says, I'm going to get back to that again, I'm sorry. So that one, I'm good with. I think that we're fortunate that, you know, that we could actually make those adjustments so that the general plan could be consistent. It's nice. Staff recommends the board to sign a resolution denying appeal by Guy Myers and upholding the Planning Commission action by denying zoning amendment based on, upon the findings included therein. So that's the spot zoning. Yeah, the CP spot zoning. Split zoning.
It's a zone change. Doesn't matter what you want to call it.
All right. So, you know, I actually feel that our county needs to support that, because this isn't going to be the only challenge. And so I am good with supporting the denial of this appeal. And then it says, staff recommends the board of supervisors sign a resolution denying the appeal made by Guy Myers upholding the Planning Commission action to deny administrative use permit based upon findings included therein. So AUP is his right to operate his business, basically, okay? I'm having a tough time with this one, actually, because of the history. He's been there for five years, operating this business, and he's got business licenses for those five years. So for me, I agree with us not, I agree with the, who was it? 2005 decision to make it CP zone for dispensaries? I agree with that. But I also see that this business has been allowed to operate like this and for this period of time without, and still producing that business license every year. And that, to me, is a little bit, that's my issue with it. So, you know, there are some extenuating circumstances in some cases, and so.
So unfortunately, the only way to get to approval of the initiative use permit is to have the proper zoning. It would be against our code to approve the AUP without the proper zoning.
Yeah, so, you know, and we can't do that.
Can the applicant change?
Can the applicant change their request to go from, to a CP to the entire, the entire...
That's certainly within the discretion of the property owner.
Okay, so what, what's that process?
Can I just quickly, but there's nothing against the law and our codes that stops us from approving the zone change, right? I'm just trying to clarify for myself that we can approve the zone change based on our zoning law.
That's correct.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure.
So, the applicant...
Which zone change? The zone change that the applicant requested.
So, if, I guess there are a couple options here. The applicant could, I believe that it's not his desire to do so because as many board members have pointed out, that it would restrict the future use of the rest of the property. But the applicant could request a zone change for the entire property. It still has the spot zoning issue, but it doesn't dread, you know, it does solve the concern we have about split zoning. And, you know, we've sort of set the precedent with Little Trees up in Arnold where that, we found that property to be appropriate for commercial office zoning. We would need to make the same finding that that property is appropriate for commercial office zoning, which means, you know, limiting its uses. And that was one of the concerns the Planning Commission had, was that they didn't want to limit the uses of the, of the site for future economic development. However, you know, if you find that this location is appropriate for dispensary, and the only way to get there is through rezoning it to commercial, to professional office commercial. And, you know, whatever other findings that you decide are appropriate to approve rezone, there would be nothing that would prohibit you from approving a zone change for a portion of the property. But the AUP would have to be, would have to follow that zone change.
And, but the applicant would have to request...
No, 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 the applicant has already requested a zone change for the portion of the property.
To CP?
To CP. And the AUP requires CP zoning. If it's, if the concern of the board, which was part of the concern of the Planning Commission, that split zoning was inappropriate, then the only option then would be for the owner of the property to agree to modify his zoning application. We would have to re-notice it and, and have a, you know, follow-up hearing on, on zoning the entire property for professional office. And we would need something written from the property owner, because Mr. Myers is a officer in the corporation, but I'm not sure he has the full authority to sign on behalf of the, of the corporation owned the property. So, we would need, you know, all the proper application requirements to be met to change that application.
But this does not, would not follow any split zoning practice that we've ever used. It would be one particular part of the parcel, correct? This would be a new approach?
As, as proposed.
I mean, whether you, whether you call it spot or split, or, you know, it doesn't matter...
As, as proposed, this would be, would certainly be the first split zoning application that I've dealt with here, because I haven't been here that long. My staff tells me that, that the practice of the county has been to discourage approval of split zoning, but we do have a number of parcels throughout the county that do have split zoning. So, you know, how that occurred, I don't know the history of that, but, but there are...
But that's parcels, that's not like right in the middle of a building.
Typically, it's not the middle of a building. And that, that is part of, part of the concern.
That makes, that makes a big difference right there. No? It doesn't make a big difference?
Not really. This one is relatively straightforward because it's, they're, they've identified where in the land, what portion of that property is zoned CP and what portion is zoned C2, or would be zoned. It's clear we can make it, take, take, measure and measure that, that distance. It's not sort of some amorphous, you know, here's a line over here, we really don't know what the, what the dimensions are. It's not as proposed elsewhere where it's a portion of a building without, you know, any of the land underneath it. So, it's really, it's, it's up to you if you think this is a unique enough circumstance...
What is the, what is the, um, the risk that we take by doing that on the intent of CP zone?
It's a legislative decision, and each, each zoning is unique. You have to look at the circumstances associated with each parcel, the surrounding uses, the impacts associated with that change on your trial. I think that what you say, what you, you find is that, under certain circumstances, we will approve and allow split zoning to occur. That's, that's the message that is sent. But it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to then approve every, every other one in the future. You don't set a precedent. It doesn't, doesn't rule over future applications. We have to look at each one independently.
Peter, can I ask you a question? If the board decided to overturn the Planning Commission, I wanted to, did I hear you correctly saying that you would then request that they continue the hearing so that you could submit them proposed findings? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, because we do not have findings for approval today. And that's... I would not want, would not wanna craft this on the fly.
The reason that's important is because we would want the findings to come from professional planners to support that type of decision, because it affects the other.
We'd also then bring back the administrative use permit for findings of approval and conditions and those kinds of things. Again, that's the desire of the board.
I have a question. So, along those thoughts, what Chris mentioned earlier about, you know, conducive uses? So, if, if we wanted to overturn the Planning Commission, and you would go back and look at various findings, that's when you would look at compatible uses and location and those kinds of things?
Well, we would base our findings on what we heard today during the hearing. We would come up with new rationale for it. We would base it on what you've stated here during the public hearing.
Okay.
But it's a matter of crafting it in a way that makes sense, and we're gonna try to write it on the fly here. So, if it's, if that's your desire, you would have a motion, intent to approve with direction to refer it back to staff to bring back, probably, I guess, in two meetings, enough time to get it, get it on the agenda.
Have to be three, maybe. Alright, so, my whole issue with this thing is, is, you know, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around, maybe that's it, the mind thing. You know, up there at Little Trees, they, they zone the whole thing CP. So, all of those businesses, even though they don't belong in CP, can stay there until they leave. Then they can't go back there as anything else but CP. I just am having a hard time seeing the difference between this, which is, if this, if this whole stretch is C2, which it is right now, right, C2? And that, that business is there, it's been proven, you know, they've had business licenses, it's there. And as a CP, it's supposed to be CP, but it doesn't belong there, because it's not CP there, but it's there, it's been there for five years.
That business, that business license was issued in error. It was renewed sort of automatically, does not get reviewed, renewals do not get reviewed by planning. So, you know, once, and, yeah, I don't know why it took two or three years to start an enforcement process on it, but then it's been ongoing since 2013. So, yeah, for, for three years, it had a business license, issued in error. It doesn't legitimize the bill, the business.
No.
But it, it does, um, they were operating apparently under an assumption that they were legitimate there, even though I, I, well, I won't say anything more.
Okay, so, um... So, that's the way I feel about it, you know? They, they were operating. And, um, if I had a business, doesn't matter what it is, and I was operating in a particular space like that, and then the county kept, you know, coming after my, taking money from me, collecting taxes on, on business license that was approved, and, you know, and then the county said, "By the way, you can't operate anymore." Then I'd be pretty mad about that, actually. So, and I know this is different because, but, but I don't look at it as two, as, as a, hold on, I'm trying to look at it as, as a business, so... It's almost like it's, it's good up there, but it's not good here. It makes my dilemma even a little bit more difficult now, doesn't it?
Was, was Little Trees operating before?
Yeah, they were operating.
Yes, they were. Operating without any certification.
I don't even know if they had a business license, I'm not sure. So, you know, I, 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 I support the CP zone. I mean, we need to make sure that, that we can, we're gonna move forward in time, and things are gonna move the way they're gonna move, but we need to be able to go with the intent of the CP zoning. I, I believe that. And I believe that we need to follow the rules and the law. So, to me, this is just like a mess. And, you know, and I wanna try to, try to make it right by everybody's that's involved, and, and the business owner especially, because, um, they invested. So, I guess that's my comments, I'm not sure where to go from here, so...
So, let me, okay, so, as we look at the general plan, what's being proposed, changing that industrial to commercial? So, that's number one decision. Number two decision then is the request for a split zone. So, taking the, the CP commercial, just that portion of the building to be CP?
That portion of the property.
Of the property.
From the C2 to CP.
Okay, and then that's number two decision. Number three decision then is approval or not of the AUP?
If the zoning's approved.
If the zoning is CP?
Yeah.
Okay. If we say, um, if we decide that we are okay with the general plan change, and then on the number two zoning of the CP, CP2, if we wanted to say, "Let's make the entire building CP," then Planning Commission or Planning, you would have to go back and find findings one way or the other?
We would have to get concurrence with the owner.
Yes, okay.
We'd have to go back to the Planning Commission, and then back to the board.
Okay.
Well, you would have to get concurrence with the owner of the property, even if you, if, if we felt that, um, maybe it should go back to C2.
Well, we already have concurrence, you just file the application.
Yeah.
File the application for, or a portion of the property to go to C2. That's what, we, we have that already.
So, the applicant is the owner. The applicant is the owner of the property.
The applicant is the owner of the property. The applicant for the administrative use permit is the operator of the business.
So, we don't have an application for an entire property...
No.
...to go to CP?
That's correct.
If, if we were to recommend that, or whatever, I mean, that would have to come from the applicant.
My fear is that we don't wanna set any precedence for anything coming forward. Because I, I think that we can get inundated, actually, with applicant, applications. We have something on, on the books right now that kind of controls that. So...
But this is unique in the sense that...
It is unique.
That this is an existing business where, as all those would be U applications coming in, except for the, a couple of them that are floating around out there. So, there would be, it wouldn't be setting that precedent, at least in my mind.
There's a history.
That's, that's one of the reasons why you need findings.
Yeah.
Yes. Alright, so, we can, we could probably talk about, let's take them one at a time. Let's move through the first one, which is, "Planning Commission recommends the board supervisors to sign a resolution applying, approving the general plan amendment 2014-030 based upon the findings included therein."
I'll make a motion to approve?
Okay, motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Olivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Got one done. So, uh... I believe that the other two need to go, was it back to four findings?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you, if you have three votes to overturn the commission, then you can continue if you...
Shall we pull? So, that's how we...
You need to find out if you have three votes.
I think that if I could assist with the motion, if your, is your desire to approve the appeal and overturn the Planning Commission's decision, would be to pass a motion to declare your intent to approve the zone change and administrative use permit, continue the hearing for, until, what, August 27th, I think is the last meeting of, of August, and direct staff to prepare findings and bring them back to you.
Okay?
Before you approve.
Before we do it.
Or you can approve.
Or whatever date is most appropriate.
So, we have a choice then, to uphold the Planning Commission's decision on three? Or to, to as Peter says? To, to, to bring it back again, to deny the, or to approve the appeal by Guy Myers? And, um... And bring it back again for further...
With the intent to approve.
With the intent to improve, approve, and bring it back for, for more findings, basically. I think there's just a few more things that...
To look at a split zoning.
I'm not willing to do that. I mean, that's, that's probably gonna be part of the recommend, or the, what they're gonna bring forward, but, um... Yeah, I guess so. It's an intent. So, I would, I would poll the board to see if you wanted to do that.
Okay, well, I would support that. And I'm supporting it for these reasons. I, I'm not an advocate of split zoning, spot zoning. But in this particular case, I believe we have a four or five-year history of a business that's been in existence. We've known about the business. I know we've, as a board, I think, again, I said earlier when I joined the board, it was, you know, we had these dispensaries, collectives in place, what are we gonna do? There's so much, many moving targets with this particular issue that it was like, you know, just gotta leave this alone until we figure out what we're doing with this industry, you might say. So, I, you know, I was part of that initial process to leave it alone, because we just didn't know. There were so many, again, moving targets. But I, I would be supportive of the planning department looking at the split zoning for this particular project. It appears that it is conducive in this particular area, in this particular instance, with this particular piece of property, that it has in fact been in existence for four or five years. I don't wanna point a finger at anyone blame about what the word collective means, or if it was antique or not, 'cause that's really a mute point, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, the, the other issues related to CP, I'm, I'm concerned about the distance to the schoolchildren and things along that line. So, you know, as part of those findings, that's what I'm looking for the planning department to confirm, one way or the other. But those are, those would be things I would be considering.
At this time, I would not be in support of any spot zoning. Basically, I feel it's not fair to existing businesses, although there may be tenants of, of property owners. I know that this is not the case. I would like to see, once again, a revision, or maybe even a review of some of our ordinances, some of our policies. We have made mistakes in the past, we need to identify those and act on those. If there was a different set of ordinances or different procedures, that would have been in my consideration in this decision. But at this time, I do not support the... But at this time, I do not support the, uh, the appeal.
Okay?
Are you upholding the planning commission's appeal? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
Yes, yes, I uphold, uphold the planning commission's appeal.
It's a very confusing discussion.
It is.
This is a poll. It's not a vote, so we're trying to give you direction. And I, I will have to say I have been, uh, on a board in the past where I saw mistakes that county staff made and allowed a business to go on for a long time. And I, I felt that that was wrong, and basically it is. And I don't, I, I don't doubt that something was done here that was wrong. And I trust what you said, Peter, that you recognized that when the business license was issued. And it does come on continuously after that. No one really reviews it as long as you pay on time and get sent through the mail. You're a good business that, uh, the tax collector doesn't have to chase you down and find out why he didn't pay. And, uh, and a lot of people that I've found since I've been sworn in don't even get their license. And it's, it exists all over our county, so that's hard to enforce. But that being said, in the past, when those mistakes were made, the, the code still wasn't forced. And, uh, I think that all that I can rely on is the same thing that the planning commission relied on. And that is that we have a code. It's imperfect. I, I won't argue that. And it's not the only one that we're looking at that needs reviewed. But it's what we have to work with. Maybe if this case were coming up in a year, or maybe if it was continued for six months, you know, and we had a chance to look at some of those things. But right now, that's not what we're asking. We're asking that it be decided on today. And I, I will stick by the work that the planning commission did. And my poll is, my vote in the poll, at least, is to uphold their decision.
Well, I, I think that, uh, there's a, it's kind of a process you needed to work, that we have to work through. You know, they, they did operate out of compliance for four or five years, um, to our codes. But then they did come, uh, they have come back before us and tried to adjust the zoning and come in compliance. So I think that is, historically, we've attempted to do that as a, as a board, is to see the businesses, you know, yes, they may, maybe they weren't in compliance in the beginning, but instead of, you know, continuing that, they did come back in. They, they're trying to make the, the change. The zoning change may not be perfect, but it is legal. And it makes a lot of sense in this specific location. And I can emphasize that enough, that in different locations, it wouldn't make as much sense. But right here, this split zoning makes a lot of sense. The zoning code is not supposed to be put into place to, to really squash people's rights. It's supposed to be put into place for public self, health and safety issues and, and be flexible. And I think that's what we're, we're doing here, is we're being flexible. It's not perfect, but nothing about this world is. So I, I support, um, uh, the, the appeal.
Okay? So, um. I guess I'm looking at it from a little different perspective. I don't think that the appeal should be supported. Because it's, it's, it's putting, it's changing his, it's splitting his building up. And, um, um, just for, you know, this one reason. And I think that my whole issue around this is the fact that, that, uh, we're putting a business, or we're asking the business to stop being a business that has been a business for five years. Because. Because of, um, the CP zone, when. And we, you know, basically condoned it for this amount of time. I just don't think that we should, I think we need to not, um, um, support the, the splitting of, or spotting of zoning. And, and so, um. So I can't support the, um, appeal. But I, I also, I also would like to find, figure out a way that, you know, this guy has, um, an investment there. And, um. Seems to me like there should be a way to work that out. It's not like he's, uh, this is fresh. And, um. It's kinda, I think it was what I've been saying the whole time. So. That's my vote, or poll. Okay?
Director Mallor, could I ask you, now that we've all spoken, to tell us what you think we said?
So I heard that there were three individ, three board members who would not support the zone change and would, would uphold the planning commission's action on the zoning. In which case, then a motion would be appropriate to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's, approve the, the resolution presented at the pack. When that occurs, then that means the follow-up action would be to deny the appeal on the administrative use permit and also uphold the planning commission's action on the use permit.
Well, but I don't agree with that one.
Well, I don't know of a way you get there from here.
Yeah, they're, they're tethered together. You can't split them up.
I guess, I guess the, the problem I have is that, uh, what? I don't really understand the issue of, of the split zoning. I mean, it's a commercial complex, so we're, you know, to me, it's at, I mean, why does it matter if it's commercial, uh, two or CP? I mean, they're right there. I don't, seem, seems like zoning's put in place to, you know, and we, as a board, can, can change that zoning. That's why we're here. And so, I mean, if you want the business to go forward, and this is a, a mechanism to make sure it goes forward, why not do it if it's legal? I don't get it, but that's, that's okay.
I think what I see is, you know, I, I see where Chris is coming from, and it's, you know, there's so many, um, different variations of commercial properties. And I think when someone looks at zoning, and you're gonna go into a building, you wanna make sure whatever your business is, is kinda compatible with everybody else. So, you know, I, that, that's why I, I have concerns with split zoning. In this case, the property owner is requesting it, is supportive of that because of that request. And we do have an existing business there that other businesses in and around already know it's there. It's, it's been there for four or five years. And that's why I'm supportive of the, um, you know, Mr. Myers' application because of that. Again, I stated earlier, I'm, you know, I don't like necessarily the split zoning. It, it's something that, you know, people don't know about. And I, I just feel like in this particular instance, we have a history that I think we have to acknowledge. You know, whether we like that kind of business or not, it is, there is a history there of that business being in place. And, you know, I find, you know, again, I came onto the board requesting, you know, what are we gonna do? And it was like, leave it alone. Let's work through our, our administrative processes. We, you know, are running businesses. We are looking at opportunities. We wanna work with people. I mean, this is one example of, of a business that wasn't in compliance and trying to come into compliance. You know, this county and this board has been faced with other businesses in that same scenario. And, um, you know, that's, that's why I, I support this, um, application and, and can understand, you know, commercial is commercial. And in this case, everyone who's in that building pretty much knows, as well as the applicant is, is supporting of this.
So, so my, but then by worry, my fear is, what about the next one? And the next one?
We don't have any more medical dispensaries, collectives out there that are operating?
We have one. That doesn't have a business license. They are operating. Their application for zone change, very similar to this, was denied by the planning commission, and they have appealed it. It will be coming before you shortly. We have several other applications in process for similar uses, but they have not begun operation yet.
Just as a point of information, yesterday I received a phone call from a gentleman in Hawaii indicating what's requirements in Calveras County, open up a collective, open up a dispensary, things of that sort. I've also received in, information, requests from Florida, from attorneys representing clients looking for property to manufacture marijuana.
We get inquiries weekly. We get inquiries weekly about opening up dispensaries.
So do I.
Yes.
How, how do we do it? What, what do we need to do? What's zoning? In fact, we have applications coming in that we have to reject because they don't have proper zoning.
Which goes, which goes to my point. If you're going to overturn the planning commission, you need to instruct professional staff to bring you a report that won't compromise future legal enforcement action.
Okay, now that, I could go for.
So I guess the bottom line is, legislative, you have the full reign of, you know, decision-making ability to, you know, base your decision on, you know, all the components of the issues in front of you. And a zoning change is a legislative act. As long as we, you know, understand the rationale behind why this is appropriate, and there's enough differences, you know, in another circumstance where you may not want to approve split zoning, then we can make the findings to accomplish that. And bring those back to you. But if, is your desire, you don't think that split zoning or spot zoning is appropriate, really in any case, then, you know, that's within your prerogative.
I, I really think if we do that, we've just opened up a can of worms. I mean, so somebody can open up, uh, one that's 1,001 foot from a library now, and, uh, and then somebody remeasures it and turns out it's 950 feet. And so we've gotta come back in and give them permission to do that. And, uh, I'm not against the, the, the idea, and I, of using it as a treatment, and that's not the issue. The issue is, we, this county has a history of enforcing the code when somebody has been out, even if they've been issued a business license more than once. And going back, and it has, it has held the test of court challenges. I don't see how we can do this. I have no desire to put this, these people out of business or hurt their business. I'm actually of the opposite mindset. But we do not have a vehicle in our county code, however needy the code is, to help, help this business that I can see. And, uh, we do not have a, a history of changing these code, uh, the code either. If we're gonna do it, then we need to tweak it for everybody. The Little Trees, they changed their entire complex to CP. And if the owner wanted to do that, that would solve all this issue, is what you're telling me. Correct? But he's not, that's not his plan. And I understand why. He doesn't wanna hurt, hurt the property value that he's got. So I completely respect that.
Okay? So I guess, um.
What do you vote?
Yeah, we'll take a vote then. So I, I need a motion. On what, on what, where you, uh?
Question on formulating a motion. Any suggestion in avoiding of the motion to make sure that we understand what we're voting on?
Well, I mean, you have, basically, you have number two, um, which is pretty clear. So you can make a motion on that.
You mean 12?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well.
Number 12?
It's, it's under recommendations. Yeah. Yes, number 12.
I'm gonna make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to support the resolution denying the appeal made by Guy Myers in upholding the planning commission's action to deny the zoning amendment 2014-030, based upon the findings included herein. And my motion's based on, bottom line, I have a hard time with this split zoning and the potential to the floodgate.
Okay?
I second that motion.
All right. So Supervisor Ponti makes a motion to deny, um, the appeal made by Guy Myers upholding the planning commission action to deny zoning amendment 2014-030, based upon the findings included therein. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, so Supervisor Kearney second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, it's four to one. All right? And then. So then we're on, uh, item number 13, which is staff recommends board supervisor sign the resolution denying the appeal made by Guy Myers in upholding the planning commission action to deny administrative use permit 2014-030, based upon findings included therein. So do I have a motion on it?
So move.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney. Second?
I'll second.
No, I'm sorry. Second motion? Okay. So I have a second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to one?
Uh, no.
Never said four to one.
Didn't give me a chance to say that.
Just one question while I have all you guys here. I'd had this discussion with you about rezoning all of my property, M4, Cliff. It seems like maybe that's what I could, should do, 'cause I got some users up at the bank that I've had to walk away from. That would've created about eight to 10 jobs with some kinda little electronic assembly thing that goes on the back of, uh, uh, taillights at trucks, something up in Canada that blows the, the things off. And I lost those folks already. So, you know, I keep coming up here and talking about the flexibility. But I can't keep spending money up here, you know, uh, getting told, no, 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 no. Okay, so, do, do you guys have a problem with me rezoning the whole property?
I think you need, go, go to the planning department and talk to them, tell them what you wanna do.
Okay. Anybody else have any suggestions or thoughts?
I have no problem with, Mr. Myers.
Pardon?
I have no problem with, with doing your own property and what you need to do with it. I do recognize the problems we've had in the past, dealing with planning departments and planning commissions and building departments and their problems. But I wanna say that I've seen some progress made with this board and this county in the last couple of years.
The, the problem that they're dealing with wasn't their creation.
I understand, and that's what I'm trying to say.
Now, now, I, I will reiterate, okay? You guys are hearing all these people calling. They're coming from all over the world to California 'cause they think it's gonna pass. If you want to limit the amount of places that distribute marijuana, you need to segregate what's legal now, and you need to plan for tomorrow. Everybody keeps saying, we only want so many in. Well, you got Valley Springs, and you're trying to throw both of those out. So, you know, a lot of times in Valley Springs through the years, we feel like we're the whip's chef show, okay? So these people, basically, you know, I guess they can drive to Ormond, or they can drive to over here until one of these gets shut down for being too close to the other one, or whatever. So I think it's imperative that you get working on your ordinance ASAP because you're going to have a flood, you're gonna get more and more calls, more and more, because people believe that it's, it's, it's gonna go. So I would just strongly suggest that. I will talk to, to planning about that. I'll probably also put in a quest. Well, I'll wait for that. I'll talk to them.
Okay. I agree with you, Mr. Myers, on those issues. I agree with you, Mr. Myers, on those issues.
Five minutes. Chris already took one, so only left a quarter.
Good to start. We will try to make this as quick and painless as possible. I know you guys have been through the gauntlet today. Again, Jeff Kravitz, Public Works Director. Today, we are here to present the state of facilities, Facilities is one of the divisions under Public Works. It's not entirely, and we'll explain that a little bit. Brief history, you know we've gone through five or six of these and one left after tonight. And so, I'm going to hand it over to our Facilities Manager, Zachariah Cullum. Most of you know him, and he'll do part of this, and I'll do part of this.
Good afternoon, Zachariah, Facilities. What are Facilities? The county facilities consist of over 85 buildings that are owned and leased and operated by the county, 18 parcels of land, six parks. The buildings are anything from government center. We have about 26 buildings here on government center, not including all the little outbuildings. Ranch libraries, the airport, the airport hangar, the offices there. County land, we have a couple parks. That we own, we own a couple parking lots. These are all just land parcels that county owns. And then facilities that are leased by the county. So we have the building that Calaveras Human, CHH SA on the corner leases, Public Health has buildings that they lease, Behavioral Health Services has buildings that they lease. We currently have about 350,000 square feet of buildings throughout the county that are under county control. This is a map that just kind of gives you an idea where all of these parcels and buildings are laid out. Yellow is county-owned and operated buildings. Blue is property that's owned by the county but leased out, that it can include grazing. You can see a nice big blue section around the landfill where there's lots of grazing land. There's teal, that's land owned by the county, and the buildings are owned by another entity. The best example of that is the senior center. White is county-owned land, and red is county-owned parcel, and we own it so that we can put a road on it. The Facilities Unit actually consists of three smaller units, that's maintenance, custodial, and administrative. Maintenance is doing what you'd think fixing stuff that has broken, and also doing AC preventative maintenance, HVAC, air conditioning, those type of things. The custodial staff has about 225 square feet that they maintenance or provide services for every evening, five days a week. And then there's the administrative unit, consists of me and that's project management, equipment upgrades, minor remodels, and all the administrative parts that go with that. In 1964, there was a proposal to build government center.
That's what I guessed.
And this is the proposal, this is the front cover of the proposal that was provided to the county, and those are the original buildings that were built here on campus. What we do, this is all three units combined together, lighting, maintenance, and repairs, that's inside the building, outside the building, parking lots. We do install, remove, move, and repair furniture. Electronic access control and keys, that's the fobs. Key control issuing, replacing, working with departments for the proper levels. Alarm systems, burglar, fire, HVAC system repairs, and maintenance, plumbing and electrical issues, mostly bathrooms, that's where most of our plumbing is, but that also includes grounds. Janitorial services, it's, you know, cleaning bathrooms, clean floor, trash, recycle, cleaning the walls. A lot of people don't understand we clean the walls, we clean the ceilings because they get dusty, we clean bugs out of lights when we can reach them. Lots of small tasks that you wouldn't think, dusting, grounds maintenance, obviously, mowing, weeding, tree maintenance, bushes sweeping when we can get to it. More of what we do, manage capital improvement projects. Electronic access control, the remodel projects, HVAC replacement, those are some of the capital improvement projects. The parking lots that we put in a couple years ago. Also manage the airport improvement projects. We just completed an airfield lighting replacement, moved all to LED lights. We've put in hangers, and we're working on paving, AWAS, and beacons. We do ADA upgrades, usually in conjunction with other projects, those are ongoing, we don't have a specific project, but they are always ongoing, and we tie them into any other capital improvement project that we're doing. We also deliver copy paper to offices around San Andreas, not only just on campus, do project management for smaller projects, the drainage project that we did outside of Building D, and a project like the tax collector's office when we replaced the carpeting for safety issues. Desk repairs, we get a lot of calls for desk repairs, drawers that have stopped working, keyboard trays that have fallen off, or keyboard trays that need to be installed. We do hang pictures, and we install department-specific equipment when the departments purchase new equipment. Continuing on managing contracts, this is one of the big things we do, and that's the jail and sheriff's office maintenance contract with CGL Kitchell, that's the biggest one that we manage. And then we also have our HVAC PM service, it's done by AirServe, we manage that contract. Pest control, elevator service contracts, generator service and testing, tree maintenance, these are just to name a few of the major ones we have. This is a view of government center as of, I believe it's May, from Google Earth, tried to kind of get a similar angle. You can see that we're far expanded from that original 1964 plan. Up on the left, you have the new courthouse, the new jail, and the sheriff's office. Up in the right, top-hand corner, you can see the bright white part is the library. And then, coming down into government center, we have behavioral health modulators, and to the far right, we have the Red Barn, the Red Barn Annex. Personnel...
Can I ask you a question about that slide?
Yes.
Where Cal Fire has their property, that, we own that property?
Yes, we do.
Is there anything we can do about the junkyard they've created?
We have been in discussions with what we can propose for them, and talking to them about it.
Can't just propose that they clean their mess up? For a dollar a year? Not that easy, huh?
Not quite that easy.
Sorry, there isn't a big audience.
Really? Shit, I've never brought that up. What kind of junk is there?
Well, look in the bottom, see all that...
I see that, but what type of trash is...
It's office equipment and things of that nature.
Lot of machinery, metal, old stuff that didn't exist.
Any maintenance, used oil filters, things of that sort?
I have not seen any of that.
That could be an EPA issue?
No, they have to follow rules like everybody else when it comes to that. They got a shop area.
Under regulations.
Yeah, but...
File cabinets, junk like that.
But, you know, I mean, they are leaving, so they should be moving towards cleaning that out.
Is there any way we can put heat on them to do that?
There's always a way.
You just did.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of on the edge of that. I'm trying to put them on the spot so I say something, then they're done with it. I'm getting complaints about it, let me put it that way to you.
I'm hearing those also. It's not, not being addressed.
Okay, thank you.
So I have complaints about the fact that they've decided to pull their operations out of here and go somewhere else in Twalme. And yet, they're just kind of, you know, not giving us the benefit of being able to take advantage of some of those areas. And it's going to, and it's costing us money. So, you know, they're taking away, they're taking away a revenue source from us, really, because when they were here, they would, they would use our businesses and that sort of thing. And they're going to be gone, but, but they just, you know, kind of like, take advantage, I guess. So there's quite a few people in the community that are a little bit upset about that.
All right, moving on to personnel. This is for the entire Facilities Unit. Our maintenance staff consists of a facilities maintenance engineer and a facilities maintenance worker. That is two personnel we have for maintenance. We have, up at the jail, under our contract with CGL, we have two maintenance personnel up there, plus all the admin that goes along with that. But we have two onsite people that are here during the week. Our custodial staff consists of a lead custodian, or a custodian III, a custodian II, who is the lead for the jail and assigned to the jail, four full-time custodial positions, and one more full-time custodial position that's assigned to the jail. And currently, we have five of those seven positions filled, and have background checks going to completely fill those positions. And then under the administrative unit, there's only one FTE, and that's myself, and I'm in administrative.
So Zachariah, you mentioned ground maintenance, so you don't have anybody taking care of the grounds?
We have partnered, we've asked and had Cal Fire here, and a few times, the sheriff's crew has been down to do it. We've, in the past, had volunteers come in and help us. At one point in time, Brent Harrington was coming in and mowing our lawns.
So no dedicated staff?
No dedicated staff.
When, when, when did you last have dedicated staff to the grounds?
2007.
Okay.
And I believe that was an extra higher position, but we also had three FTEs at that point in time also, and right now we only have two.
Is there a plan to transition from jail maintenance to, you know, yard maintenance? I mean, so, so we have people that are incarcerated, they don't qualify for, you know, cleaning up their own area?
I'm talking about jail inmates.
Are you talking about inside, the maintenance specifically in the jail? The jail was built with modern technology, and typically, it needs a high level of trained and consistent maintenance. For the grounds, the inmates are doing that, but the maintenance itself is done by highly-trained individuals.
How long's that contract? That's for another, what, year, right?
It was a three-year contract.
So we have a year and a half, and then we have the option to renew it for two more years after that.
Are we cross-training people on that yet?
We have no staff to cross-train. So, some of our partners, I've mentioned some of them in the past, but the UC Cooperative Extension Master Gardeners are working with Facilities and Public Works on drought-tolerant plantings and just beautifying areas of the campus as possible. Friends of the library, take care of the library and the branch libraries, they've been a great help. Calaveras Historical Society, who operates the museum downtown, the Red Barn Museum, and also built the Red Barn Annex. San Andreas Recreation and Parks, they operate parks throughout San Andreas, but also operate the Alex Quinones Ballpark, which is county-owned. Murphy's Volunteer Library Company Incorporated, they are very active in the Murphy's Library, and Murphy's Community Club, which operates the Murphy's Park, which is also owned by the county in Murphy's. Getting into how we do it, these are four areas that we hire outside contractors. The advantage of this is that we get an expert in each field, and we only use them when we need to. Some of the disadvantages are that we have scheduling issues, we have to wait for their schedule to open up. It takes staff time to contact them, schedule with them, coordinate, and we also have to escort them quite a few times, and we have to have a staff member with them. So there are ups and downs. Facilities as a unit, last year, spent about $35,000, actually, it was just over $35,000 on contracted services in HVAC maintenance, electrical, we hire electricians to do quite a bit of our work, plumbing, we hire a licensed plumber, and then locks, all these jobs that require a license, certification, yes.
These are all local contractors certified?
They are, yes.
Through our vendor process?
We're using AirServe of the Gold Country, Out of Valley Springs, we use Gold Electric and Jerry Gaspers, Gold Electric's, Murphy's, Gaspers, Out of Valley Springs, plumbing, Angels Sewer and Drain. In the past, we've also used Gold Star. And then locks is Brendan's Lock and Safe right out of San Andreas.
Good, good job, thank you.
As a county as a whole, outside of facilities, so some of the project-oriented, we did spend 50, just almost $52,000, including facilities, on these vendors also. Successes, the administrative units had quite a few successes in the past year. We built the, or redid the electrical at the airport, the lighting on the airfield, we use LEDs, and it's significantly kind of our electric bill out there. The Murphy's Branch Library, we got that building re-roofed. We've remodeled the Public Works sign shop so it was more efficient. Public Surplus.com, we're now doing our surplus sales on publicsurplus.com, reduce the cost of the county, so we've seen a little bit more revenue from that. We've started doing a Saturday sale, we'll do that once, probably once a year, to get rid of some of our old furniture. And the Center Bore project, it was county-wide, we finally got Arnold completed. We had, I think, 152 center bore wooden poles that were deteriorating from the inside, and were worried about coming down, and we got those replaced, not always with what we wanted. Murphy's, we did the nice green teardrop lights, some of them we did steel lights.
Those are county lights, though?
They are now owned by PG&E, the lights themselves, so PG&E pays for the maintenance, but they are in county-operated lighting districts.
Okay, so if we have one damaged or knocked down by an accident, that's county replaced, right?
No, it's replaced by PG&E.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
The ones that we've replaced, there are some that the county still owns and we're responsible for, Mokil Lighting District has quite a few of those. We record the key system on campus, and we repaired parking lot damage, the broken water line that had undercut the asphalt. Maintenance unit, we closed 337 health desk tickets in 11 months of fiscal year 1516, and replaced the storm drain around Building D, eliminating the flooding that happened around, that's an old admin building, and parts of this building were all alleviated by that project, and just getting our regular maintenance done that we did. The custodial unit added an additional 45,000 square feet of cleaning in the jail, bringing our total up to 225,000 square feet approximately. Current projects, 1516, we are working on the remodel of this building, Arnold Library, parking lot repaired, repaved and restripped, the San Andreas Library parking lot, ongoing ADA improvements with every project. Main entrance lighting, this has been scheduled for the end of September, add some light so when you go out after a late meeting, or when it's dark, that there's, you can see the steps out front. We're working on repaving the runways, the taxiways at the airport, Murphy's streetlight additions, the East End of Main Street, Murphy's gets awfully dark at night. We're working on Jenny Lynn, road yard improvements, and we're working to replace the, upgrade the AWAS at the airport, which is Airport Weather Observation System, tells pilots what the weather is here, and then the rotating beacons so that pilots can find the airport. And that is the comprehensive list, but that's the big ones for you.
So you see all of these completed in 201516?
Yes.
Meaning the libraries, that's the...
Yes.
Okay.
That is our plan right now.
So I get the tough parts. Challenges, I'm sure you are all aware, we have a lack of funding. We don't have funding for replacement of systems, no funding for true preventative maintenance of our systems, other than the very small contracts. The prioritization of our work efforts are potentially misdirected, meaning that we have a tendency to be reactive as opposed to proactive because of the lack of staff. And we don't always have the equipment necessary for efficient maintenance of what we have. Kind of tied to the lack of funding is insufficient personnel. We run very, very few crews, we don't have redundancy for backup or sick leave or vacation. We're pretty much only addressing emergency repairs rather than preventative maintenance. And with the short staff, we're not training for succession. 30% of the custodial staff is eligible for retirement, and 100% of the maintenance staff eligible for retirement with nobody in line to learn what they know, pass on the historical information. And then we have one FTE for management and administration. And then we have one FTE for management and administration. Our maintenance has been deferred. I spoke earlier about being reactive and responsive to emergencies. The only preventative maintenance that we really have going on is via the contract for the HVAC. And then there are some future space needs. We don't have a plan to address current and future space needs for departments that are expanding or have new office. And we have a fairly large amount of leased buildings to support operations throughout the county. Addressing the challenges, I've listed some low-cost methods, some high-cost methods. I know that I'm going to be going after the low-cost methods regardless. High-cost methods are for some future thinking on your part. We are already using inmate crews on the grounds to support the grounds work, community service organizations to help us with the grounds. We already utilize CAL FIRE crews, and in their defense, they do a lot of fuels reduction, both on campus and along the county roads. We're going to try to institute and adopt a planter program, maybe get a little competition among the departments. And we're hoping to be able to computerize our maintenance management system, and hopefully institute an internal service funds. Some of the high-cost methods for future considerations, they really focus around the increased funding, which would be a larger general fund contribution. Equipment and system replacement fund, additional staff. Of course, we have no source of income other than the general fund to pay for most of this.
Jeff, what do you mean by an internal service fund?
Internal service fund would be, talk about that.
Internal service fund is a way of charging departments directly for the services they receive from facilities.
A eighty-seven?
Similar.
Yeah, currently, the only revenue that comes into the facility's budget is through the A eighty-seven cost allocation plan. And if you recall in previously discussions of A eighty-seven, the only entities that really get charged those costs are those departments that are non-general fund or are supported through some really substantial grants, or in the case of the building, and co-compliance, because they have sufficient fees and have built those costs into them. So all your general fund departments that avail themselves of the facility services do not contribute revenue to them or pay for those services. And what, if an internal service fund was set up, then any and all departments that use the services would be charged for the services.
That may just be borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, of course. Okay? So outstanding issues, things that we need to consider. I believe we need to update the nineteen ninety master plan. Potentially, we could do a lot of this in-house. Last master plan was commissioned in nineteen ninety. Things were not the same then. Americans with Disability Act was passed in ninety-two, so the master plan didn't consider that. There was not a lot of consideration for the computer world in which we live in, and communications in which we live in. We think that there would be nice to have additional signage for wayfinding on campus. Every day, I come up onto the plaza, I'm directing people up to the courthouse and the jail. And then, of course, our roofs are somewhat old, very old in many cases, at the end of their useful life, so we're patching rather than replacing. Can I add one more? Yeah. Maintenance, or our grounds, gardens, or maintenance? All right, so you know that we have an offer on that for a grant, right? Yeah, that's a fairly small grant for what I call the boat out in front, is that the one you're referring to? Yeah, that's part of it. But if we could put a program together that would include, you know, the employees if they wish to do that, but also volunteer folks to adopt an area, let's say, and have master gardeners, because they said they would do that, help us with some of the plants and things, as long as we have a plan, they'll be happy to do that. And I've talked to several folks around here that would just, you know, love to do that as part of their day or during their breaks or whatever. We have met with master gardeners and talked about this. They're a little, they're perfectly supportive of plant selection, plant types. They, their activities that they do, the physical activities that they do on campus must be related to education as part of, I guess, their charter. But it is a partner with us, and I do believe that they support these ideas that I've talked to them about. And I am trying to institute this, adopt a planter type of program. Have not yet reached out to the community to see if there are people out there who are wanting to adopt places on our campus. I mean, you had plenty of spare time, so. Yeah, thanks. I know it's on top of your priority, but. We still have a lot of buildings on campus that are fairly old, the exteriors are showing their age. We pretty much ignore that unless we feel it's a public safety hazard. We're busily looking around for onsite storage, we seem to have a lack of that, there's some potential areas where we can develop that. The HVAC in this building is very, very old, limping along. Some of our safety systems are definitely in need of upgrade, and then we have hazardous materials that need to be abated, and we're going to talk about that. Next slide, the old jail sheriff's office, it's about twenty-one thousand square feet. We have mandatory hazardous material abatement, that's estimated about two-point-three million, and that's regardless of what we decide to do, whether we decide to tear it down or attempt to reuse it. So that's a liability that we are currently carrying on that building. Part of the master plan would be to look and see if it would be best for the county to demolish the building or remodel the building. Some of the costs of large ticket items, I've listed, new roof, fire sprinklers, ADA improvements, mechanical, electrical plumbing, and some structural upgrades, all coming up to about four-point-two million. And so that does not even include the cost of tenant improvements once you've abated your hazardous materials and repaired the major systems. Behavioral health, the modular buildings, the other end of campus, they're twenty-six years old, the expected useful life of the modulators are fifteen, so they're living on borrowed time. You've mentioned on a number of occasions the condition of the grounds, but with very few people, it's a little bit of a problem. Tree maintenance, that's an ongoing issue. We have dropped some limbs on employees' cars, and we removed a hazard tree in the planter outside of Public Works about two and a half weeks ago that was falling into the building. Parking lots are in need of maintenance. Of course, the earlier you can do the maintenance, the less it costs you in the long run. Departments and outside agencies are providing help when possible, but it's not consistent, it's not regular. So it's hard to depend upon and count on. More helpful ideas, potentially, we talked about the increase in funding and the general fund contribution, equipment and system replacement funds, internal service fund. None of these sound to me like great ideas. I think that we're probably going to be in a position of hoping that our general tax basis improves, and we have a little bit more money to expend. Increase in staffing, we had asked in the fifteen sixteen budget to add an additional facilities maintenance engineer as a critical position that would help both with the capital projects, and would also be in a position to receive succession training, but that did not happen in this current budget. And of course, computerized maintenance management system, we hope would be helpful as well, make us a little more efficient.
Do we have anything like that now, Jeff? Or we just don't have a computerized system in place?
Some parts are, some parts aren't.
Okay.
So currently, we have a help desk ticketing system, so requests, repair requests come in that way. And the actual maintenance, after using that, is done by hand by Dave Allen, and that's the system we're using. Up in the jail, we are using a CMMS system that has been working very well. CMMS tells you when you have preventive maintenance tasks to get done, gives you a timeline, but it also has help desk ticketing system in it, that you can put those help desk ticket requests in, and it tracks all of those activities, and how much time it takes, and you can break that down and see where you're at.
Do we own that, or is that part of the contract that we have with Kitchell, or who?
We own that. Part of the contract we have is that they purchased it, Kitchell, I'm sorry, Kitchell purchased it and set it up, but the county does own that.
Okay, so it is possible to expand that into the other areas of the county?
Definitely. It would be wonderful, and that is something that we've discussed, is expanding that. It is maintenance connection, it's a cloud-based system, it is a fantastic system for the user reporting, putting in service requests. The backside of that is that to get all of the items into the system for the rest of the campus is going to be a very large task.
Talked a little bit about more helpful ideas, talked a little bit about government center planter adoption programs. A goal, obviously, to develop a true preventative maintenance program, and also to review some of the non-maintenance tasks in terms of potentially freeing our staff up for higher-priority items, perhaps, no longer going out and hanging the photos or delivering the computer copy paper, the copier papers, those types of items. One other thing before we get into some questions and comments that I want to bring up is that the structure of facilities is that we take our lead from the admin and the CAO. We provide the custodial and the janitorial services, and we provide the specialty support for small and large contracts, contract maintenance, contract oversight. But in terms of big-picture planning stuff, we are working together with admin, so it's, the duties and the big-picture planning items are split or shared with admin, and we're in a supportive role to accomplish those things. Questions, comments?
Question. Road maintenance, where's that ball?
Depends on who you ask. You're talking about the circulation roads on campus?
No, I'm talking about road maintenance in our county.
Oh, that definitely falls under Public Works and that's.
We'll be seeing an update on that.
We did that.
We really did.
I missed that one.
Yes.
Maybe you can watch that.
That'd be a good one.
Chamber one, huh?
It was a really good presentation, too.
There's been five or six of these that have been very good. Yeah.
Good job, Jeff.
And no money there either.
No money there, huh?
No, some money there. Less than there's been, but some.
I believe it's pretty much.
You know, facilities is always a tough one, because generally, there's no money, and staff is very limited, and you have a lot of old stuff, and then you get the new stuff, and so, you know, you're trying to find the right personnel to take care of these things. One of the things, I think the weakest link in facilities is just the overall ground maintenance, you know, and I understand there's some things in place to maybe improve upon those areas, but, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but that's probably the number-one complaint I get, once people get passed into a county building and deal with staff. But it's the look of the campus, you know, from the ground maintenance to the wayfinding to the parking lots, to just, you know, the darkness on campus when we have night meetings and things like that. So, you know, I know many challenges, I'm happy to see them here, to see how we can kind of tackle one or two at a time. And it's not something that's happened overnight, it's been ongoing, and I think probably when you lost staffing in two thousand and seven, you probably, you know, with the loss of staffing, you lost the funding. And, you know, but it's caught up to us now in two thousand and fifteen.
It's been a process, been going on for a while. And it's really hard, from our perspective, to focus the limited amount of resources we have to do grounds maintenance if we're not taking care of the departments inside.
Right.
And, you know, we've got to provide that service. I think we've got to provide that service first, the business of the government, as opposed to the external appearance when people are coming and seeing us. I know it's an issue, but limit, there are limits on us. So can I bring my weed? Can you? Can I bring my weed?
I think they have lots of equipment, it's the people power behind it. That's what I hear.
Well, I'll be at people power, too.
I'll join you then.
I do want to say that we have two very dedicated maintenance personnel, and they take a lot of pride in what they do, and they recognize it every day. And it's not just the public, they talk about it to me also.
Right.
And it is noticed, everyone knows.
It's got to be frustrating for them, too, because I know they got to walk by it every day as well. So, I mean, is there a way that we can, you know, we rallied here in San Andreas to clean the whole town. Is, can we do that? Oh, I know, liability issues, right?
Have a rally day of clean the government center up and maybe get things going.
Yeah, I agree, there are trees, like, when you look out this window, that was the same scene I saw in two thousand and six when I was on the planning commission. That's how long it's been since it's looked overgrown like that. It's not your fault, I'm not picking on you, so please don't take it that way.
Actually, the master gardeners has started working in that atrium area. Yes, they have, in the last couple of weeks.
Yes. So, I mean, is there a way that we can do that, though?
We can check with risk management to ensure that we have a one-day event insurance policy to, and see what that would look like, and put out the words.
Because I'll round them up.
Some of it needs a lot of, like, our tree trimming and stuff would need some supervision.
I'll bring my chainsaw.
We have a very, very good contracted tree service that we have limited funding for, so we do mostly the stuff that has to be done. His crew is incredible, watching him take down the tree that was leaning into the building, unfortunately couldn't be saved, we tried to figure out if it could save first. He has actually come through and identified all the work that should be done, and all the work that has to be done for us, and we pretty much work off that has to be done.
Who is it?
Tim's tree service.
Now that we gripped at you, I want to say I appreciate what you do. It seems like you kind of appear magically when we've got a problem, so.
And this room's not cool.
Yeah, oh, man. Well, no, we've still got a bunch of melted chocolate back there. We'll never forget that.
Yeah, but it's all solidified again because the air conditioning's working fine now.
But you are there when we need you, and I thank you for that.
And just a couple of financial pieces to this puzzle. The board may remember or may not remember, but know of the fact that we went out and did a borrowing in two thousand and seven, it was a little over seven million dollars, and it was to fund capital projects much needed along the county. A good portion of that ended up being spent for the land where the Justice Center is now constructed, but they're still just a little bit under three million dollars in that fund. So it really limits, and we have to be cautious of the projects we move forward with with that money. There has never been money set aside on an ongoing basis since we did the COP borrowing, and that doesn't stand for COPs, it stands for Certificates of Participation. Prior to that, the money that we got in every year from Tobacco Master Settlement would go to, into the CIP budget for those projects, but when we did the borrowing, we committed that money to be, make the debt service payments on the COP. So since two thousand and seven, no money has been set aside to deal with deferred maintenance and other issues, and when that COP money runs out, there will be nothing left to do ongoing deferred projects, major repairs to buildings or anything else. The only way we can start to rebuild that fund would be for the board to set a policy of setting X amount of dollars or a certain percent of the fund equity balance at the end of the fiscal year. I mentioned something similar to start rebuilding our general fund reserve, and when we get to year-end and we know what our cash carry is, our fund balance, to dedicate a. know what our cash carry is, our fund balance, to dedicate a percent or a certain amount to be set aside into a designated fund for future capital needs.
One thing that was shown up there, it's like one of these things we probably better not ignore too long and that's a decision on that jail building. You did have a pretty good estimate it would take to fix it, but I wonder what the estimate is if we leveled it and created a park out there even more.
Well, you still have the 2.3 million liability before we start demoing it. Zach and I, Orion and I have been looking at costs for demolition on it and we're thinking $30 a square foot, somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 to $130,000, I think, with everything for leveling it. And that's after you've spent your 2.3 million for abatement.
So you're talking 2.5 billion to abatement level?
If you don't run into any issues.
Well.
Good time to start a construction recycling out there, huh?
All right. I wished I had better news for you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That was a good presentation. Zach, rise in our board. I'm glad that's over.
Board member announcements. Didn't think we were going to get there today. Yeah. So, who would like to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
Um, let's see. Yesterday I attended a child, Central Sierra Child Support Meeting. It was held in Bear Valley. So that was a very nice meeting day. It's been all my meetings at Bear Valley. But anyway, I attended that particular meeting. There was the approval of the budget. Years past, funding was based on kind of the expenses for the different support agencies. We're unique in that it's a JPA representing four counties. And so we're looking at probably funding changing in the next couple of years. And so, anyway, there's some concern about, you know, overall funding for the agency may not be as it has been in the past and, but it's not quite clear on how it's going to change and what it's going to look like in the future. So keep the board apprised as we learn more about that. But the agency continues to do well, meeting their goals and objectives and they are also looking towards continuation of, we have our four, or three offices, excuse me. We have the main office in Jackson and an office in Sonora and services here in Calaveras County and we joint venture with Alpine County. So very interesting, learn more and more about this particular agency and, you know, they do very well and certainly within the states, they're known for the work that they do and the successes that they have. Because of that particular meeting and the travel and where the location, I was unable to attend the IHSS meeting. And so I have nothing to report on that particular meeting. I don't know of any issues that need to be discussed at this time. I have a cog meeting next Wednesday. We did not have our meeting in July. Per JPA, we do not have a meeting in July, so we'll continue in August. EMS meeting coming up in August as well. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mike?
I've been indisposed for the last several meetings. I want to personally thank every member of staff on the board for taking up the ball and running the yards, making this process work. I do apologize to our folks in the county, by our TV land, but it was something I could not control. But I am back in the saddle and I'll be attending my community meetings again. I would encourage everybody to contact me via phone, email. I'm finally able to respond to our county email and look forward to getting back, doing the job that you folks have left me to do. Thank you.
All right.
Steve, welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, you're welcome. Glad to have you here. Since the last meeting, I went to a Soloways Task Force meeting. It was a good meeting, we're making progress, actually evolving into a point where we can maybe start really developing some direction and that was not easy to get to that stage. I got, as I said earlier, I got so excited that I took a Friday and accepted an invitation to tour some landfills where I saw things, if we can figure it out here, would really address some of our landfill issues and recycling issues. I was, if you'd asked me two years ago if I was going to get so excited about touring a garbage dump, I probably would have laughed at you, but it really was a good day and came back pretty supercharged from it really. And I attended a treasury oversight meeting. It's actually Mike's, one of Mike's primary duties. I was happy to go. It's good to sit at the table with all of our people who are so astute about the numbers and get a handle on the county's money sitting. I appreciated it. I'll probably try to go back more even when Mike's back at the helm. Just, I think it's something that you do need to stay on top of as best as possible. I, last night I was at a Calaveras Consolidated Fire Meeting, the board meeting. I had a couple of things to bring up, but it's always good for me to stay in touch with them. They're such an important part of our, our community and our county and especially where I live. They also, and I want to buy some press here on cable TV, they sell, one of the things that I'm doing is trying to increase the safety in my district. And if you have an address and a first responder's coming out and they can't find you, that doesn't help them very much. So, Calaveras Consolidated Fire Protection District sells reflective numbers for only 14 bucks and you can put your numbers out there and they can find your address a lot quicker. So if anybody needs a connection on that, let me know and I'll get you a copy of this. Or you can just mail it to them too, your request, or give them a call. But I'm glad to help ford the stream to get you there too. So, and one more thing, since I am lucky enough to have a newspaper in District Five, I want to bring up that he's pointed out to me on that there hasn't been a bid process for the newspapers for a bit now when they do the legal printing. And hopefully the next time that comes up that that will happen so that we can have an open bid on it and give the newspaper in District Five a chance to at least throw his hat in the ring for that bid. Thank you.
Thanks. Real quickly, thanks, Mike, for being back. It's good to see you.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Yeah. And I attended a little job training agency meeting over in Sonora and that's really going well. You know, now it's really interesting seeing that you do see the numbers of people coming in new, go down as the economy improves, more people have found jobs and are working. And so that's kind of an interesting trend. You can really see it in the quarterly numbers they put out. So I found that encouraging. And I also attended a really very informative UMR meeting, Upper McCollum River Watershed Authority meeting last week and got a good map of some of the forest projects going on in both the El Dorado and the Stanislaus National Forest. And there's been a really strong effort from both the Amador Calaveras Consensus Group as well as others to get more on-the-ground forest thinning happening. And it's starting to slowly build up again. We're starting to get people on the ground. Chips, who works, is a nonprofit that works out of West Point, they have hired now, they're up over 20 people that are out in the forest, you know, working on these thinning projects and fuel reduction. So it's really happening and BLM is trying to step up their efforts too. They presented a new initiative that would get more, hopefully more local influence on what happens on BLM land and more money for clearing and fuel reductions on their property. So that UMR meeting was really informative. And that's all I have.
Okay. So on 7/15, I went to the CPPA meeting. Just to let you know, our power will be going up a penny per kilowatt. So it'll be from 8.5 to 9.5 this next year, which could be a lot of money for the county, actually. I know it means a lot to CCWD. And then they expect it to go to 10.5 the following year. So, yeah, we'll see about that. On the 15th, I also had a chamber leadership here at the county. So the leadership team came here to the county and Dana Jorgensen was here to speak to them. And then I spoke to them about my challenges in the county as a board chair. And Dana had, you know, he took most of the time, actually. He was there for like an hour and a half. But real good job, real good group of folks that were very interested in, you know, the business-wise of what's going on in our county. And then, then I went to, directly after that, I went to the Valley Springs Area Business Association luncheon. And then after that was Camera. So I had, that was a really long day, actually. So I had the Camera meeting over at CCWD. After that, I was, went to CCTV to, or PEG TV over here to do a half-hour interview with Steve Baum, who is a person that I've been working with on the Calaveras Has Talent Program. And so we wanted to, got an opportunity to promote it, you know, on our TV station and, so that was, that was actually pretty fun. It was nice not being able to, not having to worry about, you know, talking about county business for once. I was actually having fun with Steve and it was a good deal. On 7/16, Chamber Board, Executive Board meeting, Chamber Board meeting, and then Chamber Mixer that night. So it was a Chamber Day. And Shirley was there. And it was the, the business of the evening was the Calaveras Enterprise. So it was at, at the ever-popular Pickle Patch. It was a very nice event. On the 20th was LAVCO. And in LAVCO, for the RCD that's, that we're going to be trying to get going here, I won't say trying because we're going to do it. They voted to waive the fees, any LAVCO fees, to create the RCD. The 21st, Agenda Review, usually when I come over for an Agenda Review, I end up staying here practically the whole day because, you know, from one to the other. And on the 23rd, or 22nd, spent my day at Calaveras High School. They had their rodeo, what do they call that, the student rodeo, back-to-school rodeo. And so I sat in the booth for the Community Engagement Program that they have going. And it's basically, they have a website and it's called, it's called Calaveras Community Engagement. And you can log on to their website if you're a nonprofit or if you're a group that wants to get volunteers to come and help you. You log on and you can, what's it called, registered, Calaveras Community Engagement, CCE. And you can register there and then they'll screen you to make sure that you're legitimate. And they'll put it on their website. The kids, they all have a student ID. They log on to the same website. They create a profile and they can volunteer for whatever you got going. And so what they're supposed to do is come and volunteer, go back and log what they did, take some of the hours, the hours that they spent there and put that onto the same site, log it onto the site. By the time they're seniors, they will have a detailed report on all the community service or community activities that they did, which of course, you know, is good for the future of their employment or even the college application. So it's a good program. I personally think it should be a requirement. I'm getting a lot of pushback on that one, but we'll see how that works as a volunteer program first. And I would like to get as many community service organizations out there as we can to log on to that site and register. If we can have some, even here, if there's anything that we can do here, that'd be great. You know, like Steve was talking earlier about, about having an intern program or something like that, there may be things that we can create to get these students to come and get, to learn about their community, learn about their government and volunteer in the community as well. So lots of opportunity if you think out of the box. So that was on the 22nd. And I was there with Stacy Johnston, you know, the executive, the executive director for the chamber. She's got a way with people, man. She could stop more people and talk to them. So I was really impressed with that. On the 23rd, we, I attended Historical Society Dinner up at Cinders Ranch where Shirley gave the, brought in the new board members and she gave the induction. So that was really good. And then I got to watch some of those folks go down that slide. That was real fun. On the 24th, last Friday, I went to Toolumee up to Pinecrest and they, I was invited by John Buckley. And they gave a tour of the experimental forest that they have up there. It's 640 acres big. And they've done lots of different treatments to it, experimenting on it to see how, you know, different reductions in the forest and different forests, like the trees, and also types of trees, sizes of trees, the types of vegetation and all of that, what it does to the environment, what it does for the environment, what it does against it, what it does for the habitat, the animals. And also Roger Bales had one of his weather stations up there, so he was measuring, you know, he's doing a hydrology study as well. First, we started off in a part of the forest that hadn't been treated since, or actually logged since 1929. Man, you can't see very far in that thing, you know. So, I mean, that thing's like a big old fire box. It used to be that there were a lot more oak trees up there and a lot of different trees other than the conifer-type trees. A lot more pine trees and a lot less fir trees and cedar trees. So when you go down to the treated areas, it's absolutely beautiful. Absolutely beautiful. And they did some areas where they just kind of, they logged it out, left stuff. Then they went to another area where they logged it out, chipped it out. And then they went to another area where they had more open space and, you know, and watched the animals, what they do. And then they went to another area where they actually logged it out and then they burned it off. So the idea of that is, that's the best treatment. The idea of that is to find out, you know, one of the things was to find out how many trees you're going to lose in a burn like that. And less than 10% is what they came up with. So it actually was very informative. And so I, at the end of the meeting, of course, you know, they're talking about how we need to, how, bring this out into the public, and, and see if we can get the public to be, to have a positive input on it, and bring, and try to get our legislators to agree that this is a good thing, right? Really, it's a great thing. So, so I stepped up to the plate and said, hey, you know what, Calaveras County, I'm willing to start a meeting, start to have meetings there to inform the public and, and get the legislators involved that we can, I'll go out and work for that. And I said, is, is next week too, too late, or too early? So, you know, we're about two months out, I think, on that, but I sure would like, I sure would like the, the board to get behind that. It will create jobs in a big way. And the, the idea, too, is, you know, they still have to do their environmental reporting and things like that. So you do an environmental report on a 100-acre parcel, or 10,000-acre parcel, right? So actually, the bigger you can, you can do, the better, because it's more cost-effective, quicker, and the work can start, and, and you can get a big part of it done. What that does really is, is it gives the companies that are going to go into the area confidence that that work is there, which means they'll, they'll invest into what they need to do to process all of what they're bringing out. So, a lot of work to do, but there's a lot of great things happening there, and I'm looking forward to supporting that program, so. That's it.
Just to remind you to the board, so you get it on your calendar, final budget hearings will start September 8th. Instructions went out to departments yesterday. It will be mainly technical adjustments in nature that we bring forward to the board, and hopefully it will go as quickly and as smoothly as recommended budget.
I have, I have nothing unless you want a close session that you want me to put on for whatever reason. Nope, no close sessions.
Usually that comes from you guys.
I'll think of one.
Yeah. Thank you, David, and thanks for doing a great job today, David.
I do have an additional comment. Last Saturday night, I'm pleased to say that Calaveras County was well-represented in Chicago. TJ Dillashaw defended his title and won.
That's right.
So I'm hopeful that maybe at some point in the next several months, we can have TJ come to a board meeting and we can give him a resolution.
Well, I think that you ought to put that proclamation together there, Debbie.
All right, I sure shall do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It was a good, a good fight, and not that I'm into that kind of sport events, but having TJ in Calaveras County.
Well, you know, we're known for people stealing cars and earthquakes, and now fighting, that's great. Very nice. Fire, don't forget.
You did a wonderful job.
Good job, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you, meeting adjourned.